Counselor Jackson, I want to ask Councilwoman Jackson to be so kind to give us those details.
If you're by the means, thank you for this opportunity to come before your holy and precious son. Lord God, we beseech you, that you will give us mercies, remit, a sense of purpose, Lord God, and that your will be done in answer to us to accomplish your only and dearst love and your grace. Lord God, we decrease that you may increase with us. Lord God, we ask that everything that is done and saved here might be decent and in order. Obviously, there is unity, where there is the anointing, the unity flows. And, Lord God, we ask that we unify in our thoughts, Lord God, unify in our direction, Lord God, unify in our purpose. Lord God, I thank you for each and every member that is serving whom you receive in this season. Lord God, we just ask their blessings upon our citizens and thank you for this. In Jesus' precious, holy, righteous name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. And let me correct the agenda. Tracked advice was Councilwoman Jackson Ireland and Senator Monitor was Councilwoman Jackson Ireland. Councilwoman Thompson, do you need to know?
Yeah, for me, we're about the boxes, you know, the boxes we have, the switch boxes.
Tracked advice.
Mr. President, I need to add two things. Well, one thing to the citizens request, I need to add Mr. J.K. Harris and Reverend Walfer. Um, truth reconciliation day. We have a resolution that I have prepared at the request of Mr. Harris, and I have prepared it and done copies for everyone, for every councilperson's signature. And, um, but anyway, I'll pass them around when Mr. Harris and Reverend Walfer come over. And also, I need to put this, I want to put this, we may need to have a little discussion about it, but this could be a very important issue. Ward one and two, safe shelters for against storms and tornadoes. I know over the weekend, we were expecting some very bad weather. Thank the Lord, which I would doubt was hard rain. But wards one and two were left without safe places for our vulnerable people to go. So, we need to discuss possibilities. And, but anyway, I just want to put that on the deck to come under my court. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. President, I forgot that, I was trying to call you for Ms. Sanders to be on there to speak today. And I wanted to add another one to the list. I wanted to do Alabama State law litter. It's so far down, it's going to be on my agenda from now on, on the basis.
Let me go, so you want me to add to the basis, all right?
Yes, sir.
That's Alabama what now?
Alabama litter.
Alabama litter, what now?
Law.
The litter, though. Do you have anything else?
That's all, sir.
Thank you. Now, to the citizens who request, we have Mrs. Sanders, then we have Mr. Harris and Reverend Walfer. I'm turning it over to Councilwoman Youngblood with the question, resolution for Mr. Harris and Reverend Walfer. If y'all please come forward, please.
At the same time?
No, no, Reverend Walfer.
Oh.
Yeah, gentlemen, please proceed.
TRHT Selma, Selma Center for Nonviolence, Truth and Reconciliation is part of national racial healing. This is Dan Harris, Reverend Walfer, we're co-directors, co-programme directors of Selma. TRHT Selma, okay. I'll try to use my preaching voice.
There's number.
I'll try. My name is Reverend Walfer, this is Dan Harris, we're co-programme directors of TRHT Selma. And we've asked the council, we asked Mrs. Youngblood, who's a member of the multi-sector team for TRHT Selma, to help us, assist us with getting a resolution. She has done that and it's been presented before Kellogg Foundation through TRHT. Asked us to do this because they wanted to be a part of their programmatic efforts as they do a video that they have taped, which they taped earlier this last month for, to be shown on the 22nd, 21st, one of those days. It's the day of the Martin Luther King birthday. So, we just wanted to, here before the council, to ask that you all would grant us this resolution.
Thank you for having us here tonight. And thank you, Councilwoman Youngblood, for bringing this to the attention of the council. Some other members have been active in some of the programmatic things we've been doing over the last three years, and we're entering into a fourth year this year of what we call TRHT, standing for Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation, Selma. And this resolution is an opportunity for Selma to join the thirteen other national places. Some of these cities include Los Angeles, Chicago, the entire state of Alaska, New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Buffalo, New York, so some really large other cities around the country, Dallas. And it's a great opportunity to show some national unity and just acknowledge that this is a place where the citizenry and the council and the city government is dedicated to continue racial healing for the community. And so, it's an honor to be able to present this resolution to you. We've been working with Councilwoman Youngblood to go over the language and present something that would be good from the standpoint of City of Selma, but if you need to change anything, I think that the program and the folks, the good folks up at the W.K. Kellogg Foundation would be happy to do that. And this work is done in conjunction with the Black Belt Community Foundation in partnership with the Selma Center for Nonviolence here as our programmatic partners in the city. So, we have two very special days of activities coming up with MLK Day for Dr. King and honoring him on Monday. And the second day, which is the unofficial holiday, but what Kellogg is really trying to promote these last few years, as the National Day of Racial Healing. So, there'll be a lot of good publicity and a lot of good words coming out around the country. And Selma's really going to have opportunity to shine on Tuesday because like Reverend Walfer alluded to earlier, Kellogg had sent a film crew with us to come down and spend a little time with us talking about the good work we've been doing. And they're planning on involving that in the national broadcasts that they have planned for Tuesday to go out to the rest of the world and talk about how Selma is, once again, showing a leadership role in positive change for the world. Thank you again for letting us come here and bring this to your attention for your consideration very much.
J.K., I did not have the, I have a chance really to prove it. So, if there are any typos, any language errors or anything, if you get the, if y'all, if any of y'all have the opportunity to prove it, I can do it again. You know, I can fix that in short order because we'll, we'll actually, we've got everybody tonight, and I'm hoping everybody, assuming everybody will be here tomorrow night. Um, we can sign it if it's okay tonight, we can sign it tonight, certainly tomorrow night. But anyway, I am so proud that we're doing this here in Selma, Alabama. That says a lot. I've got to get a picture, y'all, because this says, this says a lot. This is what, you know, I'd like to see, see more of this, look at me, Reverend Walfer. I'd like to see more of this, on the 21st, 22nd reconciliation day.
Like I said, it's a thrill to be here. And if y'all need to make any changes to this or see anything that you have a question about, let us know if you happen to make any changes necessary. It's customizable for Selma.
And I did read it as I printed it off, before I printed it, I did not find any glimmer. I didn't see any obvious.
I just sit there and read this too. I think it's a good resolution. I was hoping, great, if we could sign it tonight and write a fine affirmative tomorrow, since we got everybody here. Everybody may not be here tomorrow night, but we get everybody's signature tonight, then this will be a full council participation, and tomorrow we can write a fine affirmative.
And what we can also do is get a seal from Ms. Ivor Harrison to attach a seal to the resolution. We got a copy, we can still, can we attach it around?
Well, just do one, because I didn't, I thought I had enough copies for us, but I didn't. Oh, okay. Maya said there's one typo somewhere on the, let's see.
Yeah, it was spaced, it was like a ten minute to words.
Did you print it here, Councilwoman?
No, I printed it at home.
Is the printer here working?
No, that's why I did it at home. I can make it for the morning.
And also, we need to go to the wall.
Yeah, we will do that.
Well, the problem is get Ms. Harris to put on the resolution paper and have her attach a seal to it and get a frame.
All right, I'll email it to her, and if you'll circle it, Councilwoman, and tell me where it is. So, I'm real bad about when I do something, I can't say my own stuff. Anyway, that's why it's always good for somebody.
Also, please put on a frame, put it in there, and get Ms. Harris to put on the resolution paper and attach the seal, the fitted seal, just to make it official.
All right. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you all.
Attorney.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't going to come back. That's absolutely.
It's been a long time.
We go up, it's a little hot. I came for something specific. I don't have enough copies for everybody. What do you do with? They were sharing.
Excuse me?
Before I stick on that issue, Kellogg is doing great work here, so is the Nonviolent Center. But I remind us there can be no reconciliation without truth. And the truth about what has happened in this city centuries has yet to be told. And I came for you and asked you to please put a, something at the foot of the bridge to let people know that Edmund Pettus was the grand dragon of the complex land. I just came to remind you what he was responsible for, because I think if we knew it, we would act more expediently. These are actual pictures, so you have a picture of the Klan burning a man alive, a black man alive. You have a picture of a woman being harmed. This is Klan activity. And I think that as long as we pretend this is not the history of Alabama, we cannot heal. There cannot be reconciliation without truth. I cannot imagine a Jewish person in the world, in the whole world, would allow a bridge, something to be named after somebody who killed six million Jews. And more than six million black people were killed, and nothing was done about it. Not a single person was ever prosecuted or went to trial. I don't know how y'all feel about that, but that hurts me, that we still live in a place where we will not deal with the demons of our past. But I really, that was one thing I came to talk about. And Councilman Benjamin, you spoke up for that, something to come at the foot of that bridge to let people know. We know the state of Alabama, they love these Confederate monuments. We know that. So, you can't really, maybe you can't change it until we change the law, but you could put something there to let our kids know that Edmund Pettus is not somebody to be honored, that he was a domestic terrorist. That's who he was, responsible for the killing and lynching of so many people, black people, white civil rights workers, and Jewish people who stood up for justice. So, I hope that y'all would really consider, it would cost less than $2,000 to put something at the foot of that bridge to let people know that Edmund Pettus is not a person to be honored. He was a terrorist. Some people have suggested that the name be, named after John Lewis. That's one name, where so many people suffered. But Mr. Lewis is going through four-stage cancer right now. But if any single name, it would be a good name, but I think so many people. But that's not. The other thing I came to talk about was what I just gave you. Can I borrow you?
Yes, please.
I am so alarmed. My nonprofit owns 209 Dorce Street. David Johnson, I think he has some mental issues, but he constantly puts trash on this property. I constantly complain. I paid $2,000 for some people to remove what he did. I found out that he comes to the police station every day, so they like him. Chief, they like him, and you don't do nothing about it. You just was a new chief. I arrested him, not to put him in jail, but he keeps doing it. If you go out there and look at the pictures, I wish they were in color. They're all around the building, inside the building. And I talked to the, what's the city court judge's name?
Heygood.
Heygood.
No. I talked to him over and over. I said, when he does the same thing to Goodwill and, um...
Yonah's here.
But the city makes him pick it up, but they don't make him pick it up when it's on our property. It's my right. That's just my right, y'all. And I arrested him, I called, they do absolutely nothing. This has been the pattern here, before y'all got on the council. This has been the pattern with me and my husband for about thirty years. Al Bein wrote a story about how they refused to prosecute and arrest people who violate our rights. And it was just a few years ago where this woman just stole, I prepared a house for the Jubilee for Dr. Barber because they ran out of hotel room. It was completely furnished, she stole everything out of the house, including the refrigerator and the stove. And I think they wouldn't, and just asked her to give it back. They wouldn't even issue an arrest warrant, just asked, and she didn't give it all back. To this day, she hasn't been arrested. But I'm arrested for picking up a sign illegally put on public property? Think about that, y'all. Just think about that. And I still, and by the way, I still haven't had a hearing, that's been almost two years, since they arrested me. And I advise y'all to use your attorney and look up the statute. You have a statute that says it's illegal to put signs on public property. That's your law. And if you check the records, the sign was on public property, not private property. And I still see, I see, Ms. Jackson, you still have signs on public property. So, what is going to be the rule? Just make sure the rule is spread to everybody. You know, I still see signs right now on public property. And I will be honest, I did take up the sign because it was at our historical Tabernacle Church. That's why I took up this sign. It was on public property in front of a church where the first mass meeting was held, when not a single black person, that's not true, only a hundred and some black people in this whole county could go. That's how bad things were in Selma. So, I'm asking you to do something with at least this. I don't think you could go back and, all those other clients in the big community, yes, made people, went to the bank, took my money out, stole my cars. Mr. Neely, I'll tell you who it is, they stole my car, Mr. Neely didn't do nothing about it, didn't even arrest him. So, it's just not fair to treat some citizens better than other citizens. You don't have to like my politics, but I still got a right to due process of law. I got a right to justice. So, this is, this, this place is really bad. If you go by there, it's just terrible. And I'm hoping that y'all would take responsibility. I'm not paying another $2,000. I don't think I should have to pay to have all that junk removed when I removed it the first time. And I called the cops and say, he's here doing it again, and absolutely nothing was done about it. But they made him remove the property from Goodwill and the Salvation Army.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Benjamin, then Councilwoman Thomas, chief. If you can get Ms. Sanders to see what you can do to rectify the problem.
All right, then. I'm going to go backwards, I want to go back with, maybe way back to the bridge. Mr. Johnson, I was trying to picture in my mind who he was. I think I know who he is. I think I know, is, is the gentleman that's always on Broad Street?
He's always.
So, he was in my ward. Okay. This is why I got to get out of this line and work back into the work that I love. Is he mentally ill?
Yeah. I don't want the man in jail, but I think that something's got to be done to stop him.
Yeah, you are correct. We just got to figure out how to sensitively do that.
The same way you paid for the Salvation Army and Goodwill, he was made.
No, I mean get him help, period. Like, get him help so this, this whole root of the matter can be taken care of before someone hurts him. People sometimes, as we know, hurt people who are mentally ill and not understanding. And that's one of the reasons I asked for the police department for cultural competency and to have training in that area when we had the shooting, a couple of shootings.
This is a show.
Not just Mr. Shaw, the young lady too, and all that. And so, we got to sensitively find out, chief, how to deal with Mr. Johnson and other situations like his, so that we can take care of the root of the matter. And the root of the matter, he may be harmless and mentally ill.
The cops like him, they're not going to harm him.
Yes.
I'm told that he's at the police department almost every day. The problem with me is...
That's my, okay, I'm impressed. So, another thing is also, since he is, he is doing the dumping and we are removing the dumping, preparing where that he dumping except on one spot. Ms. President, can we find out how we can rectify the problem when he... It's a small problem, it is a big problem.
It's a big problem. And Jubilee is coming up, it looks really bad out there.
And where is this located?
Why is it Broad Street? It's on that Broad Street.
Oh, okay, by the gas station. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's also the main street. So, if we can find out how we can get that removed, I don't know how we can do it. Maybe some citizens want to help volunteer too. But the root of the matter and removing the trash. So, we do have a big event, our biggest, biggest event coming, and we do need to have that.
We can get a resolution.
So, we can make that look good. Your hearing, how long has it been, it says? How long has it been since you requested your hearing?
Oh, you mean for my personal trial?
The hearing, the hearing that you wanted for removing the public property.
Oh, I arrested him back in the summer.
Last summer.
All right. What happened was after I paid somebody $2,000 to remove it, he just put it back. When I saw him putting it back, I called the cops. They came and arrested him, let him go, but the man didn't pick up anything. Y'all just think about this. Just think about this. Let's think about this. I'm going to get arrested for pulling up a little sign that's illegal on property. This man can put all this junk on nonprofit property, and nothing happens?
Now, this is a...
Oh, y'all, you don't have to be a genius to figure out there's something wrong with that.
That's him, he's the same person. He was in my ward.
Okay.
Okay, and then I want to talk about the same person. So, it's the same person?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm told he's at the police department almost every day.
I have a case on the crime about, wish he was arrested.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking about the case of the man.
The sign.
That's the second thing I was asking about. The removal of the sign, how long has it been since you requested your hearing? Yeah, that's what I was asking about, okay, okay. So, that's not Mr. Johnson?
Now, I filed a motion to have the charges dismissed against Mr. Randolph. I represented him for a vote, because I thought he was illegally arrested. And they granted that motion. I also ran a, filed a motion for them to drop the charges against me, and they wouldn't do it. But I'm not concerned about that. Somebody also filed bar charges to have me disbar behind this? Oh, y'all, this is Selma today. But let me go to one other thing. Don't worry about me, it's seventy-five, I'm going to make it through it, whether they get here or not.
Okay, so, and then the last thing, I was moving backwards. Last thing was the bridge. And so, Council President had asked me to look for some information, so I couldn't find anything in the Library of Congress, and you probably have more information than I have concerning him being the grand wizard.
Who's the grand wizard?
Uh-huh, being the grand wizard. Couldn't find anything in that area. We did find general information on him, and general information that everyone knows on him. And I saw a poll, an unofficial poll on Facebook concerning the name of it. I think this is probably second poll. The poll that I saw was placed on Mrs. Lindelary's page, so you may want to look at that too. So, that poll, you had the majority of the people, when I checked the poll, and it's unofficial poll, were saying, this is the bridge that we cross, why y'all, why the Selma want to mess with the name, and all of those things. So, I think someone needs to create something official, if somebody wants to bring something official like that. And then the last thing is...
Excuse me, so, on that, most of all, before she became a senator, there were like three hundred thousand signatures of young people across the country that said, rename the bridge, the bridge, the bridge.
Uh-huh, I remember, she brought it here, she brought the whole stack of information, she brought it here. She brought, she actually brought those signatures here to, here to us. So, I, yeah.
All I'm asking...
And I did check with the law, so, yeah, we would have a law, would have to be changed.
At least put something so our children will not look at this man as a hero.
So, I agree that we need an informational plaque. We need a historical plaque on Edmund Pettus at the bridge. It needs to be accurate, it needs to be all those things. And I don't think a plaque on who the name of the person on the bridge would hurt. So, the historical plaque, but those are the places that I need.
I did put one on the other side of the bridge in the door, made my husband pay for that because I just could not stand by another year and not allow all these visitors who come to Selma think that Edmund Pettus was somebody to be honored.
That's it, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to make sure I had hit on everything that she brought to us, and then including the reason why she had, I had, had a hearing.
One more thing.
Hello, Councilwoman Thomas?
I know, I know where you're coming from. I dealt with Dave Johnson in my ward, on Lotte Del. He had all of these abandoned houses. He packed them. He packed every last one of them. And I dealt with that for quite some time. I brought this before the body of the council. But what I had to do is, Mr. Dave personally, I know him from being, he stayed in my ward. He lived in all the abandoned houses, and he went to Goodwill. If you put anything out there, he going to go pick it up with a bucket and bring it back, just constantly pack those houses. But how I got, how I got rid of him, this is what I had to do as a representative of that ward. I went to the real, you're the owner, but I went to the relative that owned those houses. And we in the community, he had, he put the clothes the same way. And I had to call the police because, like Ms. Benjamin said, he would get in an argument with the people that lives in that area, and, you know, people would pull the gun on him, and he'll pull the knife out. So, I went before, just like you did, went before the judge. Then I went to the higher step, I went to the other court, and I asked them, we know that this guy is a mental person, but he comes from a good family. His family's from down in Orville. And I had to get in contact with some of them and tell them that either he needs to be sent off or they need to do something because either he going to get burned up in one of, because they were threatening to burn him up around there on Lotte Del in the house with all the clothes. So, we worked on it, I kept, it take a while because he'll wear you down. But we did get him out of our neighborhood. We did, eventually we did. We did get him out, and he didn't come back because I kept, we had to keep pounding on him.
You know, I offered that property to the mayor before this was, as a place for shelter. This was like ten years ago. I said, look, we'll give the property to the city because it is a sore spot. And we put money trying to renovate it, and just a lot of homeless people started living in the house, and they caught a fire. It's not, it's not, it's a hazard. And I thought about turning it down, but they said it is savable. The last thing is, I thank you for allowing me all this time, the last three pages.
Hello, you have anything else, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I was going to ask you. I know that you, that's your house on that corner?
It's not mine, it's our nonprofit's house.
It's a, okay, if it's a nonprofit house in that building, could you, after you get the clothes out, and we need a shelter, and it's a nonprofit, could you come up with some kind of grant money to try to do something with it, use it as a homeless shelter?
I'm sorry, I'm not good at it. But I would give the... Um, I'm sorry. I'm not good at it. But I would give the property to the city or organization that would give the grant money to make it a shelter. I'm willing to do that. Okay? I'm on the board. I'm willing to do that. The last thing, the last three pages is not that property. Uh, my foundation also owns property on King Street. Y'all would not believe how bad that is. It's worse than Two Oh Nine. Uh, the last three pages, you can't even go down this street, there's so much trash. The trash is all in the street. It is, it is, it is, it is worse than anything you could imagine. The last three pages, we have a house on my nonprofit on, right there on King Street, right behind King Street, that road that leads out to... You know what I'm talking about? I wish y'all would go down that road. It's absolutely sinful. I don't know whose ward it's in. It's in your ward?
No, sir.
It's 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 an atrocity. It really is. These pictures don't really tell.
It's my ward, and we're scheduled January the eighteenth to go out there. I was notified that we have a, uh, actually, another landfill within the city. We've been over there, as, uh, the councilwoman has stated, several times and cleaned it up, and they've told us that it is, uh, unsafe and a hazard to come over there without papers and gloves, like we generally do. So I finally got some people to donate a bulldozer and bin to come out.
It's gonna take a bulldozer. But it's been like this now for twenty years. This just can happen overnight. But it's gotten worse. You can't even drive down the road now. And so I can't even sell or rent the house there, because, uh, people say, I don't wanna live in a community with all this trash.
Well, actually, it hasn't been that, but the entire time, uh, when I first got in, uh, Public Works, Mr. Stephen Hendrick, uh, got the property owner to clean it up several times. But of course, without, um, proper code enforcement, it is a term like this. And so we're going out, that's why we were meeting on January the eighteenth at eight AM at the corner of King and Gary, because it's in that alley, and we're going back there with the bulldozer.
It's more than one property on there, Councilwoman?
Yes.
That whole road is filled with trash. You can't even ride down it.
I understand. It's a landfill inside our city. That's what it's been described.
And and the city's a lot.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chauvin.
This is, this is, this is not a ward problem. This is a city problem. And I've been telling this council, nothing's gonna change until we enforce the ordinance that we have on the books. That is requiring citizens to have a garbage receptacle. I'm gonna tell you, are we up into spinning our, spinning our wheels? Dog chain this tail, until every household have a garbage receptacle, we're gonna continue to have this experience in our city. It ain't gonna change.
There are not that many houses down there. A garbage receptacle is not gonna help that that street.
They're dumping.
It's all over the city, turning.
I'm saying, this is the worst street in the city. Yes, it is. Go out there and see.
Go over Shannon Avenue. I guarantee it.
It is even worse than Two Oh Nine, Rush. I mean, you got Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Thomas, then we're moving on.
Um, I didn't, I didn't know we had a functional code enforcement department. You said we need to enforce the, the, I didn't know we had a functional code enforcement department.
Yeah, we don't. That's my point.
Okay, so.
That's my point. We cannot enforce our ordinance until we get some enforcement and put some teeth into the laws we have in place. That is requiring citizens to have a garbage receptacle. If we, if every household had this, then we would not be talking about this problem.
There are houses there, Councilwoman.
There are millions.
There are no houses on that road, but one. There are abandoned shacks. There are no houses.
They're dumping their home and taking it.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Benjamin.
They dump it there, but they have no.
They do it. So garbage receptacles are not going to change dumpsters. So dumpsters come from everywhere. They come from all... Y'all hear me, Dana?
I'm sorry, I got another problem with this other one.
Okay, let me speak to me, Councilwoman Johnson.
I'm sorry. She came.
Okay, but dumpsters come from everywhere. So having that receptacle is only going to force the person who didn't have one to put their household stuff in one. But the dumpsters are still going to continue. They're still going to continue. And we have people in Cedar Park who would bring stuff, and it was coming from the county. And the only way I was able to catch it was I I got permission to put the camera there and to pan down, not on people's houses, but to pan down on the dumpster itself. That dump, the mattresses and the couches and stuff, came from out of Dallas County, out of the county. So dumpsters are gonna come from everywhere. The trash receptacle does not stop a dumper uh, from coming. It's not, it's not gonna do it. And so it's like a hit and run. It's it's a hit and run offense. You gotta catch them right there, or who will we put it on?
We have to bond.
All right, follow up question then, Councilwoman Jackson.
I I concur, but when you have, and if you go around the city, ninety percent of this mess is household garbage.
That's true.
Ninety percent. And when you have receptacles that would take in a household garbage, then the city would take care of the other parts of the trash. There are places, in the respective communities, that people have designated places that they put trash. But what is, the problem is, is household garbage is not being able to mingle with the trash. And it's creating a problem. We have problems upon problems, and the only thing we do every two nights out of the month, come up here and talk about this problem. We need to fix this.
Now, I said one other thing. I think there's a culture that has to be changed here. And and poverty, and not, it's not just poor people that doing that. Some of us, other people doing it. But there is a culture. And I think that the council needs to envision, in line with what the work is doing with the Nonviolent and the Foundation, is to come up with something to change the culture. Uh, I just, me and Hank went to China, and 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 I was amazed. We went to Shanghai, twenty-some million people, Belgium. We didn't see a piece of paper with all those millions of people on the ground. Not any. And it's a culture. And I think we just have to create a culture.
We can't do that.
So we can move along. Councilwoman Thomas. This is one time I'm trying to get away, y'all keep asking me questions.
No.
Yeah, uh, I'm changing, sir. Uh, back in November, you sent a memo requesting, uh, I'm not sure, but, uh, Black Belt, uh, Human Resource Development Center, uh...
Books.
For books. And, uh, I know we we gave discretion there for it, but I don't think you got it checked.
We never got it.
Yeah, 'cause I know a lot of people's up there signed.
I signed.
We never got it.
So, Ms. Wade, could I give you this now and then do some research? If not, we just redo it tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest with you. Y'all want to start in the book clubs? Because Black History is not taught in our schools, y'all. We have to be creative like other schools. So we thought that the book clubs would be a good way. And the first book we started with is Linda Lowry's book, Turnin' Fifteen on the Road to Freedom. So the whole idea is to get children to read the books, and each time they read, they write a paragraph. We give them points. And with the points, we want to take them on cultural trips, and we want every organization and church to consider having book clubs in their organizations and churches, because people know they'll do better.
That's it. Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, um, two things. I got on my phone already, but one guy sent me, Mr. Ray Brown, who did cleanup at different wards, where we, he caught some people docked in a truck. Uh, and then you don't know what to do with it. I got a picture, and I've done this before, but the person had changed the tag, the wrong tag. Didn't have the right tag on the vehicle. I also asked him to date, this couple lived on Brook Lane, and there weren't no young couples. He was older couple. Brook Lane. And I went to them. It hurt my heart, 'cause I know this man personally. His son come in and busted all the time, and I called him a name. And, uh, he kept him and his wife drunk in all them garbage bags, right there on Hamilton, right there by my shop. And it really bothered me. It hurt me so bad, 'cause I knew who these people was. I, she's, when I flagged down the stop, she said, yeah, okay, I know, and kept driving. So really, it's been a shame. But I did, and I mentioned to Sam, Councilman Randolph, back here, two years ago, that we need to have the homeowners to help us. Every household they rent out, at least make sure they have a cop. We're not asking them to pay. Help us. Make sure that their tenants got a cop. But they packed this thing here, and all they even wanted to do. Just that simple. We asked them to help us to make sure their tenants got a cop. That's, you know, and and that's it. That's all we need them to do to help us. I think we better help solve this.
I think the council assurance right, you might almost require.
Yes.
But you and I are doing, uh...
Well, we may have, 'cause we're...
So can I get a response from, um, about Mr. Two Oh Nine on Broad Street? Can I get a response before the Jubilee?
I know what you're saying.
I would like for it to be removed before the Jubilee. And I I give out the other request, if anybody can take that property and make it a shelter, I would, we would glad, my foundation would glad to get it.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Mrs. Maxwell?
Oh, happy birthday, Councilman Randolph.
I brought you a cake. I brought you one tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Sam.
All right.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for having me. I'm Wanda Maxwell, and today I'm the YMCA. And I'd like for you all to look and notice Mr. Haley back there. He's, he's, he's helping us at the YMCA. He is our interim CEO. And I think the question is, where is Mr. Speed? Well, Mr. Speed, the government's watch has taken over his salary, but he's also helping us as we need that too. So he is not, he's not gone away. It's all part of the system. The reason I've come before you today is because I have been talking to all of, all of the councilmen, and we're asking, um, that the YMCA be put back on the, um, lodging fee, the monthly lodging fee. Anyway, we're asking that the YMCA be put back on the monthly lodging fee. And that is not a tax for the community to know. It's not a tax. It's what people pay when they come into Selma, and they live at, and they, um, have a room at the hotel. So it's a hotel lodging fee.
Also, too, Ms. Wade, could you look at the total amount that we gave to the last year?
Uh, uh, sure.
Can you check into it and bring it back tomorrow?
The yearly, it was average about five thousand a month. So it wasn't, I think it turned out to be maybe, uh, sixty-two or three thousand.
If you can't look into it, just bring it back to us.
And it was one dollar that was going to us in one account, and then one dollar that was going to the brown and the other.
Yeah, 'cause I asked the, uh, the, I think the other dollar to draw when I did, uh, the ordinance never came to fruition though, where it would go towards, uh, capital improvement. But the order's never came forward. That's something they want to be there.
But we're not touching that.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I was under the impression that we had already mentioned that we had voted to, uh, restore.
You have, you have. You you did. The issue was, I think, the question was whether it was supposed to be in the budget or whether it was in a separate pot. And I think that's why, that's why we're here to try to get that straight. Whether it's in the budget or whether it's separate. But all of you all could know, could know the answer to that.
Just get back with us, my brother's still up. We put that house in, also, what was the total amount that we gave?
Matthew.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. Mrs. Maxwell, what is the condition, what is the state of the union at the YMCA? Uh, what what's going on? Has there been membership increase? What is the retention efforts? What is the sustainability effort? What is going on? I got a chance to speak briefly with, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name.
Mr. Haley.
Mr. Haley. I got a chance to speak very, very briefly with him at the affair that we were at, because it was a different type of event. I didn't wanna go into, uh, that right there.
Yes, and I would like Mr. Haley to speak to it, but just wanted to just add, just just a quick little snippet. We're trying to expand our programs. I think you and, uh, Ms. Thomas was at an event, Heart Healthy Event. Of course, you know, we're working with young people who are being bused in, uh, to the Y on Thursdays, and we're doing a lot with our seniors. But I'd like for Mr. Haley to come up and and just give us a quick talk about, uh...
What commission of the president?
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yes. First time meeting.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. President and councilmembers and general public, my name is Glenn Haley. I'm the interim CEO for the YMCA of Selma. Uh, part of the reason I was brought in is because of my experience of working with YMCA's across the country in turnaround. And this is a turnaround situation. One of the assessments that I was asked to do on behalf of the YMCA of the USA, which is our national corporate headquarters in Chicago, Illinois, was to come in and make an assessment if this was a viable situation, and that was the nature of your question. The two months I've been here since, uh, November the first, the answer to that question is absolutely yes. Uh, if the debt was addressed appropriately so, this YMCA has a sustainable future. The good news is that we've already addressed one part of that debt. I'm in the process of addressing the second part of that debt, uh, which we should have resolved by the end of February, the remaining two banks. From an operational perspective, working with a partner YMCA, which is in, uh, Florida, they're gonna do a final, the final financial assessment review, hopefully by the end of February, or certainly by March thirtieth, that would demonstrate that if the debt was addressed on an ongoing sustainability effort, which I've already validated from my pleb, plebery work, this Y has a viable future, uh, for for the foreseeable future. So that's one. Number two, uh, it's about programming. Um, one of the things that we have to do is get back to programming this Y, which I am working real hard to do. We, uh, have had several events that have taken place. We've kicked off our YDL. We've already added two new classes in, uh, two months. Uh, and we're looking to add new staff to help get some new programming going, which we currently don't have in the facility. We will have our summer day camp going this summer. I'm working to do that. Uh, I think there's a Boy of the Year event that's supposed to take place in May, and in March, we're gonna do our, uh, Father Daughter Dance. So we are still planning, uh, all the things that we have planned in the past that will continue to happen.
And I just want to... Please don't leave, because I I have to report, um, the the two parts that you took care of the first part of the debt.
Yes.
Okay, and then you have a second part to take care of.
Yeah, there's... Which part?
Go ahead. I wanna get your...
Which part are you referring to?
I'm referring to both. When you've taken care of the first part, which brought you where? Where did that bring you?
Uh, we reduced our debt by an initial one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, we have a three-year plan to deal with the balance of that.
So in three years?
Yes.
You will have a crack.
God willing.
Yes.
God willing.
I've I've been pretty successful in three of those situations. Um, the largest amount of debt that I had the opportunity, which I take no religion, was over two and a half million dollars. Uh, and this, in this given case, we're talking about about a million or two.
And, um, and the financial assistance will be available March 30th?
By March thirtieth, by a partner YMCA. That is correct.
By March thirtieth.
I I have to get, uh, some financial statements with our auditor, uh, which I'm working with the auditor to do that, so that they can do the financial assessment. We need to get our statements completed. So we're working to get all that done, and that will be done, hopefully, by February twentieth. All the financial statements of the Y will be accomplished with our auditor.
Okay, then finally, thank you for letting us know about programming. You're adding programming.
Yes, ma'am.
Added to the class, and I look the class that I attended, uh...
Thank you.
We were glad to see you.
It was fabulous. Uh, thank you to, uh, the Lenz Incorporated for that part. Uh, so the program has been added already.
Yes, ma'am.
And our children are being bused in. Don't forget that.
You know my dog. You know exactly what I'm saying. I asked Maxwell every single time she come before, and I was, I always...
That was our arrangement.
Yes, that was our arrangement together. And so transportation and bringing the young people in, I heard these guys also say, we are now bringing them in.
Yes, we are.
We are bringing kids in. One of the challenges is transportation.
Because you know my business, I always ask this of her, because there's no safe biking trail, and there's no safe walking trail to the YMCA. And that's why I always ask her.
That's right. And the partnership, the wonderful thing about it is that we're working with the school, Savin City School System, Dr. Avis Williams. She has been a gem. She is a a real partner with the YMCA. And so it's a collaboration, and we even have a bus driver.
I was just good.
Councilwoman Chauvin?
Uh, when you get to that, Mr. Haley, could you get down to, uh, give us an idea as to what percentage the financial support of the city is given to the YMCA that goes toward the, the date?
Hmm, that's a good question. Uh, let me, let me share with you what my dilemma is that I'm trying to address. Um, the ongoing operation should support debt if we get it settled and straight. What, uh, is badly and sorely needed, and I actually talked with Madam Chair before we just came over, we've gotta repair and fix... we've got to repair and fix up the facility. There's some capital things that need to be done ASAP. And because they've been draining the funds to pay debt, they haven't invested in the facility. And you all know that, for those who've been to that Y. We've got to fix some things. So what I'm suggesting to the board, which hasn't been approved or accepted yet, is that we use those funds to fix up the building so that we can drive membership. When you have equipment and you have facilities not in good repair, people are not going to come.
Say that one more time. Say it. Say it again. We have videos that we talk about. Say that one more time. Repair.
I would go to sit, but very, I'll read. If you don't have buildings, if you don't have buildings and you don't have them in good repair, you will not have people come to your facilities and assets. Just will not happen. I've been doing this for forty years. I've worked in Y's where they were in poor repair and people leave. They don't come. I need to fix this place up. Here's the beauty of this building. I've done this in, as I said, multiple cities. What Selma has in this YMCA is a beautiful building. It's, I, I wish I could pick this up and put it in some places that I have been in this country and fix the mechanicals, the electrical and the stuff. We would rock.
I, I, I hear you, Mr. Wade. I hear you. But my question, I'm going back.
Go ahead.
A budget is a circle. You already know what your dollar amount is that you need to liquidate. How much?
Capital?
No. Membership pays a percentage of liquidating that debt. My question is, what percentage that the city's lodging tax would go toward liquidating that debt? That's all I'm asking. And I think.
You're talking about the five thousand dollars that were coming on a monthly basis? Is that what you're asking? I'm just taking, I'm taking Madam Chair's number.
Whatever that amount is, I need to know. In that circle, what percentage do you have to generate on liquidating that debt?
He was asking.
And the ordinance will get that. Come on, I'm going to ask you for that. I'm going to get the ordinance and get that.
I don't know what was done in the past and I, I can't speak to, I'm not trying to avoid your question because I, I don't, I don't know that right now. What I'm focused on is any.
It's an honest question. Just pose that to me.
Oh, I'll take it, take.
He wants you to take it.
Oh. I can do that. I thought you were asking me how much is going to go for debt? And what I'm saying to you right now today, if I got a five thousand dollar debt from the city tomorrow, I'm going to go fix a piece of equipment. So one hundred percent is going to fix something in the building right now.
But what you're doing with it is not about business. It goes toward the YMCA. I just need to know.
I didn't understand the nature of the question.
Do this city support what I'm saying? That's all I'm asking. And the ordinance will get that.
Sorry, sir. I misunderstood the nature of the question. My, my bad. On that one.
Yeah, I'll just ask one more question. You know, Kevin, I'm interested in the process of giving it open to recreation.
Right.
Have y'all looking at maybe downfall by them opening it up? Well, I mean, a lot of people in this area, I think, more like Councilman Shaw Ward, maybe Councilman Thomas Ward and maybe my ward, probably end up there that's trying to get way out there. That y'all expect to maybe a fallback behind after this, when they open up? Or you think that everything will be okay?
Well, there's two different services that, they have a different clientele that we're servicing. It's two different market clientele.
And, and in addition, but in addition to that, we, we are more health and wellness. We're health and wellness. We are educational also. That's where we're trying to move the program back part. We're trying to move more into education, educational facet. The Ebony Night, from what I understand, it's going to be more of a service to, you know, people coming in, playing ball, that kind of thing. No, but, but we're educational.
They have education too.
I got one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to thank the Y first of all. You know, I'm not sure that, uh, gentlemen, we need, I talked with him one time. I told him several times and he finally called me back. The problem I was having was with the homeless and that building was, I think like what Sam was saying, where it's full of garbage and trash and clothes and everything. And I called again just to pull.
Chris Goddard.
And y'all came down and took care of that. I hope we can get it that, you know, I hope we can get it done in a quick amount of then. And cause he promised me that they're going to bode that up. But it ain't got boded yet.
The biggest problem with that, I think, is probably the same people that, that Sam was talking about, I think the same people. But of course, we are a Christian organization and it's, it's kind of a hard, it's just really kind of a hard thing. We're going to have to have city help to try to do that.
Well, they not sleeping up now. So it's a time, yeah, it's a time to bode it up now. So don't wait till the summertime. Yeah, he, but we can bode it and keep it from going back again.
The brown YMCA I was informed was donated to a nonprofit.
We're in the process, the nonprofits request it and we're in the process of, they have to show us all the paperwork. It has not completed yet, but we're, we're in the process of. We've given them consent to.
I was under the impression that it had been completed.
We, we told them that, that we will do it and they have accepted, but the paperwork is not complete yet.
Okay, and in between time until it's done, the affair on home across the street has mentioned to me more than once and it's in my board that it is, it is black on their business. And because families come there in their hour of agreement, that they would hope and pray that the YMCA would do a better job in, in keeping that property, I guess, cleaned up. So if you could.
We will, we will, and we are, we are, we are. But, you know, it's, it's kind of like the property on Broad Street too. Once you clean it and then people go back and dump. It's not that we're not cleaning it and it's not that we're not, you know, doing it.
I think that problem is, Mr. Maxwell, is nobody's jumping. I think during the spring or summertime, the foliage.
We kill it. And we, we put chemicals on it and we need to put more chemicals. But then, you know, that, there goes it again. You know, that's a community property and you put it. I mean, it's, it's, it's more than what it seems. But yes, we will. Yes, we'll clean.
I just want to say for both, with the Ebony Night and with the brown Y, both, both people would be successful. Because you got, you know, you have different people that goes to the, to your YMCA. And then you have the ones that unfortunately can go right here to Ebony Night's where they don't have to pay.
And I support both because as a Christian person, I'm trying to serve everyone in the community, however that is. So we support both.
And they, and they will have educate, they will have programs too, that's to help the, the community. It's all about being there for.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wade, you had a message in the morning about the market.
And we want to invite all of you all to come because you know, because of our partnership with the city, you all can come in and out and use the facilities at any time.
Oh, I have. I wanted to, to throw out the possibility of, Councilman Bo Leng and I had discussed this over the weekend about perhaps the possibility of the Y being designated for the shelter for Hors 1 and 2. We would need to have the folks that would hurt people look at it to, to.
Part of EMA?
Yeah, EMA certify that as a shelter for when those times come. And that wouldn't be more than, you know, a couple of times.
Bad weather. You're talking about bad weather.
Like, and.
Three in the morning.
Usually, yeah, I mean, usually there are people, usually don't leave their homes, but sometimes, you know, they, they may need to.
And I think, think someone threw out with a hundred capacity.
Yeah, I need to figure, uh-huh, comped it a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Probably to give with Miss LaHaus. Councilman.
Yeah, Miss Stiles, I did with Toria, uh-huh.
What's, what's Stiles?
She is Toria at the EMA.
That sounds like something.
Answers how you would have mentioned very well.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You can tell he already is in love with Selma.
Cheers.
All right, business items, traffic light, Councilwoman Jackson and financial monitoring, Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay.
I want to pass out to you all, if you recall back during summer, the resolution that voted to allow, give them some that for me, Gaston, the city of Gaston, to donate to us eighteen traffic citizens. And since that time, I've been speaking with someone trying to get those picked up. There was a concern that if they came back to the city of Selma, they would get trampled and would probably be in a worse state than they are now. They are keeping them in a secure facility and keeping them up. But I've gotten a quote to have these eighteen lights refurbished and completely redone to be brought to code and used in our facilities here. And as you can see, they'll be equipped with LED lights. They'll be purchasing, installing all of signals. Redone, they'll be stripped, they'll be repainted, they'll be welded together. And so there's a cool breakdown. This is all that costs approximately thirty thousand dollars. And so I'm asking that you all consider this or that we find something better. This gentleman is out of Ohio. I did not find anyone in Alabama that was even reasonable. One person wanted to charge us thirty-five hundred dollars just to refurbish the light. No LEDs or anything. Just to paint well and put them into place. And that was thirty-five hundred dollars per light. But these are going to be completely redone and completely up to code and ready to be installed. I actually asked if they would be interested in coming down and installing because they're going to, this includes their transportation cost to come to Gaston, pick up the lights, then bring them back to Selma, Alabama. So I asked them about perhaps installing them because you know, like the boxes where they get here and their company specializes in all of this. They get here and they'll be like our boxes and they, they won't be put in. And he stated that that would probably be a hefty cost because he would have to fly several men down about a week to get every one of them installed. But we can always get a quote and look at it. Or we, he said that he would actually look at some companies around the state of Alabama. But the refurbishing of historic traffic lights is something everybody's just going to miss. And I wanted to keep the nostalgia of our, preserve some of the history of our community as we continue to progress that actually gives someone things to look at as well. So we can, you know, spend eighteen thousand dollars and get all brand new lights and not have, preserve our history or we can refurbish these. And it's whatever the pleasure of the council. But I finally got all of this worked out. I mean, we were talking with people all over this country. And thank you to Bear Williams and Warren Henson, who's been assisting me through this six-month process of getting this done. But this is for you all to review and decide on tomorrow. So I'm asking you to be honest.
Councilman Jackson, I noticed that they want fifty percent down. What is the turnaround time if we do approve this of them giving the back to, the lights back to us?
He said that it would be about ninety days. But he says he has to look at the actual conditions. He's going there to pick the eighteen lights from Gaston. But if they give them every one of them that's broken and every one of them that needs to be, he knows he has to do the rewiring, but weld it together, you know, it could be longer. But that's what he's initially saying.
So right now, this quote is based on repairing all the lights?
All the lights.
Now, do we know what all the lights got damaged or not or?
No, we don't know what kind of condition. All we know that they've been in Gaston for twenty years, over twenty-five years.
So they do need some repair. We've done some. Okay.
They haven't given us, they had thirty-five. They didn't give us that much.
Okay.
They, they took.
I was just trying to see, you know, what, okay.
We have a policy here for those, gas and cars.
Yes, they, they allow us to have them for free. So thank you to the Gaston mayor and his chief of staff. I don't think it's called chief of staff, but it is administrator, that really got that done. And it's been sitting there. They got this done in June or July of this year. Once again, I was afraid to bring them here. I didn't just want to throw them somewhere and move it off. I mean, they are caring for them, but of course, they're going to keep the best for themselves.
Any exploration with the Department of Transportation or Highway Department to see if there might be any funding that would help with this?
I have contacted the, you know, who was hoping our grant provider. I did.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I did ask her to explore something because she's working on FEMA for the fire department and the traffic right now. And so I know the licensing.
That's right. I forgot. I heard that she got people.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think that eventually, so we need more than eighteen lights. So I think, I think, and I'm not talking about the ones that are just out. I'm saying that in every intersection that we have lights, by federal code, we're supposed to have two lights. Like if you say the state highway, Dallas and Broad, everyone has two. Lauderdale Church is supposed to have two. Every one of our streets that have a light is not supposed to have one, it's supposed to have two. So if anyone is. Right. And, yeah, we have some that's just broken off. May have one and a half or something like that. And so we're going to have two enough. We have another city in Noonan, Georgia, that we're in contact about donating some more because we're going to have to come up to code or we're going to put ourselves in a liable position because he's videoing us right now. So we're aware that we're outside of state and federal statute regarding our lights. And that if someone has an accident at an intersection with the light, the city of Selma could be there by.
Then Councilman.
Okay. Councilman Jackson, have you looked into what the new ones are running? And, and also, do you think we need to be able to give an estimate on the labor for installing these? See where we at before we get these and just put them in a corner like you said, and them getting damaged?
Right. And so I would, I've asked him to look into doing the labor as I stated. He said that he would have to fly someone in and it's about three personnel along with him. And it would be about a week's worth of work to do. So he's researching some companies in Alabama that could possibly get that done. And I wouldn't ask him to deliver them, just like I didn't ask with the permission of the council. They allowed me not to do that. We didn't go to Gaston to pick up the lights. We asked Mr. Ellison if you please hold them for us until we could get them into a secure location. And he stated yes. And so he's helped them since they gifted it to us. And so I wouldn't want them to be brought back here. And they're running, you can find some cheap, maybe like the ones that we just replaced on traffic light Franklin and J L Chestnut. It's really, really bad. Right. We can find some like that, maybe seven or eight hundred dollars. But the ones that I've seen, you know, are running about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars. There may be some cheaper. I'm not an expert. I'm just looking online. And so, but the character that we have with those lights of what we're trying to keep. And most cities are giving away from it because they want to be modernized. But if we're, we're really interested in becoming a tourist attraction, then I think some of these things that we need to keep in a business. Those are just my thoughts. We can focus on that.
Councilwoman.
Okay. I want to talk about the comparison. You, well, first of all, is this the only quote?
This is the only quote because the other gentleman.
Now you have a thing about us getting three quotes.
More than one quote. And so the other gentleman just sent me an email. Yeah, I want, I can bring you all the email. For thirty-five hundred dollars a light without LEDs.
Okay. And so there's no other quote out there, babe?
These are the only two in the nation. And we got Temple Electric here in Alabama. And that's who we were referred to initially. And. And, um, Mr. Greer, G E E R, um, stated thirty-five hundred dollars to restore. That does not include the LEDs.
Okay, so this quote is thirty thousand dollars and you were talking about, um, we can do this or we can do something else and it would cost us what? Um, you said it and I missed it or you didn't say it?
Right. So I was saying we can, we can get these lights refurbished and we have an LED and, and ready for, um, just like a brand new light but with the historic bay, or we can purchase a brand new light, a nice one, hopefully not like the one on, um, first, uh, J L Chestnut Franklin that will, um, cost us about fifteen hundred dollars per light.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we can pay for it.
Do you know what that total is compared to this total?
Fifteen hundred times eighteen, we're just looking at the eight.
Okay, we're doing, we're doing six fifty times eighteen, is what you're saying?
No, this is nice, this is, yeah, this is six fifty to refurbish, but it doesn't, the LED is what costs us much.
Uh huh.
Yep.
So the purchase, yeah, does, it costs twenty thousand dollars, purchase and install of the LED is the twenty thousand dollars and it's minus thousand seven hundred to get what we need for a single light.
Right.
And then when we, uh, come down and want to, we want to get this company to do a purchase, be the buyer for us, it's gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars.
Right. When they're not, where, what I asked him to do, he could refurbish them without putting the LED and we'll have what we have now. They're not, uh, coordinated, but what he's doing is bringing them up to code. So if without new boxes, all the wiring and everything would be completely done. And that's an issue that we have because with the new boxes, no one knows how to work that.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have anyone that, um, really has the expertise to get them done that, that would already be in place. It's just as if we brought a brand new light. So the council can decide that I want to pay approximately fifteen hundred or we can get a real cheap light for six fifty or so and, um, go with those, um, or we can choose to do this.
So he's saying these lights that have been there twenty-five years, if he does what he does on his quote, these lights will be working, these lights that have been sitting up for twenty-five years.
Yes.
He's going to do all of this to the lights. And after he does all of this to the lights, the lights will be working.
It'll be a brand.
No, they're not giving us that best like you said.
It'll be a brand new light, um, a historic light with all the brand of today features for twenty twenty.
New guts, old shell.
Excuse me?
New guts, old shell.
Yeah.
Fresh paint.
Right. And so, and then he's asking that we want to, are you seeing here, um, yellow or black? And of course, we, we have the, the, um, such colors as green, yellow, black, and we would go with our gold.
Yeah, like.
That we already had, um.
Mr. President, don't our gentleman hang the lights now? The, the one we got on electorally?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, who hung the light on Franklin and J L Chestnut?
It was public work.
Well, I understand, but I mean, we make a saving money.
He's not hanging it.
Well, who hung that one, you said?
I'm sorry, this gentleman hasn't given us a quote for hanging it.
No, no, I understand what I'm saying, no, no. I'm saying can we get, right, public work can make the lights and say we can save that money. You know, who the hell know what other name, who did this one on?
He did.
Yeah. I mean, if you just take time to do one a, a week or one a day.
And all the ones that were, were there still hanging. It, it's, it's kind of the reason I'm asking about this twenty thousand dollars, this other, um, uh, well, I'm asking about the whole thing.
I think.
I'm just asking for a comparison of.
What we probably did to do is just put it in the safety meeting, come in and just vote on it by next council meeting.
Okay.
And that way we can work out all of the just the things that we have that we're talking about. Just call me, then, uh, just vote on it by, uh, the next council meeting.
Can you have that number, that be?
Who's the leader?
Yeah.
The massive.
Well, yeah, we could, we need council.
Final question. So, so we have a small question for Councilwoman Jackson. Can you bring up that, that other quote?
I see, we can get him on.
So we can match the details.
He, what he, what, and I wrote the other email. So when he emailed me was that he would charge us, um, thirty-five hundred dollars to refurbish the light, did not include LEDs and then, and so my guess was, and it's like sixty-three thousand dollars, I'm like, oh my goodness, that is just absolutely too much. Now, this gentleman can only do the refurbishing. It wouldn't have the lights from work inside it, it would just have the nostalgia. And then we could, um, find out how to get that installed and purchase that and all those things.
Okay.
But we don't, you know, we, um, why would we do that when they're the experts, man? They would do it, and I don't want to get refurbished and then they could put in public work like my track, um, street signs that have been there since February last, they're nine thousand dollars. I'm hoping it's, so I just don't want that.
Had a contractor somewhere?
Yeah, that's what I was doing that.
Get it put up.
Okay.
So considering we're gonna put it in public safety, now let him know and then I bring, I'll send you all the other email.
Yeah, tell me.
It was two weeks.
And, well, you know, about the safety, maybe, do you think it may be possible to do a conference call with him?
Yeah.
If you have any questions?
Mm-hmm. Uh, just tell me the time and date, I'll make sure I have it.
Financial monitor, monitor, Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay. Um, my next thing is, um, Mr. President, I know we don't quit, um, items on the agenda anymore, we talked about the accounts payable several times and then we get the two Cs and I don't agenda, I just want to vote it up or down. Um, you know, that I would explain to you all, um, to the council on several occasions that this is something that, um, other municipalities are doing county government here, um, and this is something that I learned in our county class, government of county class, that we should be doing, um, and we're certainly not. We're responsible for every check, um, everything that's paid from the, um, city. The council is responsible. Um, and if I'm going to be responsible, I won't have an opportunity to look, I told you that, um, Homewood actually has a finance committee and they rotate the committee members, they have about three on each and this serves about two months, but they actually come in on, um, Thursday and a Saturday, they give up two or three or four hours and they go through every document, um, so they just don't go through a printout of all the checks done, but they look at the purchase orders and everything and they come back to the full council and give their recommendations whether they should be done. I've told, talked to other, um, government entities and they say that they give their council members a package and commissioners, a package, um, to go home over the weekend to review and then have, um, questions and asks and then they vote on it. But it's just like approving the agenda, it's approving accounts payable on the, on the agenda. Um, and so we would have an idea of what we're paying out. It doesn't include payroll, but as y'all know, we have some payroll issues, um, people that are being paid without our consent and without, um, the votes that we've taken. And so to, to put ourselves in a position that would lessen our liability, um, if something should come up, I think that this is something that we should be doing.
We can just put it up on, when I get to the finance report, uh, our real floor, you can bring it up. Up on the.
Well, you can put it on the consent agenda and let it vote up or down.
Yeah, what's.
We don't have a, we don't have a special about.
What's the, Councilwoman?
I have, so, so, uh, I did send in, um, my agenda item that I decided to remove because he's going to be present, was Bobby Seagull, attorney Bobby Seagull. I did, I, that was one of my agenda items, but when I heard that he's, he's coming tomorrow, I took that off, uh, be- because that's, that's a couple of things I would like for him to speak with us, um, particularly, particularly when you just brought up that there are, um, payroll issues and folks being paid without our, um, without, I don't know how it happens, um, without our, our knowledge and, uh, consent of the council. And so that's why I had that out on there, but thank you for letting me know he was coming, uh, this first, and that's why I took it off. So this, he's coming early, so I just wanted to speak with him first concerning it to see if, um, if it's gonna be a court matter or something else.
Uh, my other item under financial monitoring is our, um, warrant payment that's going to change this July. I know we talked about it some, um, time last year. I didn't see, I may have overlooked it because I was a little, um, frustrated and really couldn't understand what was going on in, in the, um, proposed budget that we, that we got, um, and so it's no fault of anybody, it's just part of my lack of concentration. But, um, I wanted to see, um, what were we doing proactively to come up with that, um, additional twenty thousand dollar principal payment that's going to be due July twenty-fifth of this year, making, um, our total monthly payment to, to that warrant, um, fifty-four thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, um, from the thirty-five, four, five, seven, two, fifty. And I know at one time we had actually stated or mentioned refinancing and I, I don't know if that's even on the table, seeing as though our credit rating is, um, greatly diminished, um, since we, um, this, under this administration and from the time that this bomb was done, I don't even know if that's a viable option, but I know that, um, we want to have to come up with twenty thousand dollars, um, beginning in July. And then council, I'll follow up and I'll send you all this because Ms. Wade and Ms. Oliver sent it to me, um, that in July twenty twenty-three, uh, four years from now, and so we're looking long-term, term and want to make sure that we, um, ensure that the city is viable even after we, we leave the council, um, we have a payment of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar principal, um, that'll be due July twenty-five, fifth, twenty twenty-three, and that's thirty-three thousand dollars in interest for a total monthly payment of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand two forty-four seventeen. So we're going to have to put ourselves in a position that we can, we're looking to pay this. And so that's my monitoring item, do we, do we have something in place that this is gonna, do we have money back, have we thought about, are we in a position that we're gonna be able to pay this twenty thousand dollars extra each month?
Okay, that'll be a question. We just get, we just get with you and just come up with some ideas.
Sure.
And maybe we can bring in an account to help us with it.
Are you reporting tomorrow?
Yes, next time. This time?
Okay.
You can report it.
Okay.
Is, is the, um, tax, is this tax collector?
She need to come in.
Is the, did she, was, is tax collector supposed to report on the first or the second?
Uh.
And she's the first, I think, the second?
The, uh, second.
Second, where they alternate, but we need to know how much money coming in because she can tell us.
How much money coming in, probably business license and.
Right.
But keep in mind now, we all appoint her, but it's up on the day-to-day operations. So that, that can be a question, you know, tomorrow to.
Yeah. Oh, it's. Speaking of that tax collector, isn't she supposed to be coming before us? I mean, she's supposed to.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
That was the book said. I'll make a report to the council.
The book show said.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I would, I would listen to Councilwoman Jackson with this payment that we got made and I think that, uh, that was followed that, uh, like the bomb out for the stadium. Do we, we do have insurance on, uh, buildings and things, on our building. We, the, the stadium is caving in, the office is. And, um.
It's like the second time that.
And the roof, the, the coach, Coach Reese, uh, office, what, what, I think, I guess charity resigned now, the whole cylinder came down, basically.
It's like the second.
I have no idea, that's will of repairing the leaks up there and it's leaking, and matter of fact, and then having them repaired and it's started raining inside the stadium, not just in that office, that whole hallway. So I'm not sure if we can file a claim on there or what, but, um, we need to get that done, it ain't getting no better with all this rain coming in. And we started making payments.
I'm saying that.
Contracts have been, finally, they've been, it's a contract to get him out.
Yeah, that was before, yeah.
Contract to take him out.
That's what I've just been asking you. Doesn't, um, when they do the roof, put a roof on, do they have, uh?
It's supposed to be.
Uh, so many years or something, a guarantee? It should have some.
Two or three years. I thought, far as this particular, this is the same one, I know we have did that roof about two or three times.
Yeah, we need, we need research.
They need to find out because it was not a licensed company.
We need to, that need to be researched.
That's up there. That probably was me and my boys got it.
Well, you know, we can.
Councilwoman talks.
That's a shame.
No, no, that was I was asking you.
Also too, before we went to the next business items, you have a package I put in your phone that's, uh, about the, uh, police holiday pay ranging back from twenty twelve, um, this is a personnel issue, uh, they wanted to go retro acting to get paid for the holidays that day.
Sorry.
Okay. Vacation time. But what I'm gonna do is with this particular one, I'm gonna also seek the advice of Val Jones, who used to be the HR director and also Mr. Random Miller, and, uh, get their guidance on this because I don't know, has this been a standard practice, whether they can carry on their vacation time or not, but, uh, go ahead.
Have you looked in a, um?
I did. Got it, yeah. But I looked at, but, oh, speaking of that personnel book, uh, I contacted somebody to take a look at that and we need to advise that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, have somebody look at, uh, I did contact, uh, an individual to see, uh, could we go into a contract with, uh, far as that personnel manager. Because if that personnel manager, uh, it's not clear in the size.
Mr. President.
It's too ambiguous, it's not clear in the size, I can tell you that.
Angela Benjamin.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Um, you, two thousand sixteen, right?
Yeah.
This memo came to you from Johnny King in his capacity as police chief on New Year's Day this year. And he decided that he needs to take care of these matters from two thousand sixteen. Did these officers give these to the other police chiefs?
That's same.
To bring, I, I've never seen these requests before and whoever they are, I'm saying these officers, I don't know, I don't even know who they are, but whoever they are, the, two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen. You want us to go backwards and do what?
Uh, eighteen, nineteen, yeah. I'm going to also give this to.
And they need a janitor to keep the building and the grounds clean. We, we have a police chief that is gonna make a report tomorrow. I mean, this came on New Year's Day, like a day or so before, uh, the new chief was to take office. And we, we're talking about a chief, we're talking about what we need, janitor and all those kinds of things. Isn't the new police chief gonna give us a report on all this stuff, um, tomorrow?
Yes. Cause I don't know if they have a confirmation that they delivered to him or not, but hopefully they did, but like I said, I was, I just brought it before the.
Who can report to us concerning this old, old holiday pay?
Well, basically that's why I turned it over to, uh, Charlie and also, uh, getting the signature of us of two big personnel because, uh, I've never heard.
Yeah, cause how would we verify this data?
Uh, you know, uh, you know, I love the public.
Yeah.
I love the public.
Right.
But you know what this is?
I know.
This ain't nothing.
Yeah.
This ain't nothing, but, uh, some of, not all, but some of the folks that got some pay that ought not have got it because they said it was that pay and you know what that was, that was.
Okay.
And that's what they said because they, but anyway, and also, Mr. President, you know, state pay, they don't let you carry on rotation.
You always carry them for one hundred eighty days. It goes towards retirement.
You can get credit towards retirement and all that, but you know what to do, what you said, right? I just have to say that.
This is.
If you put it out there, we might have been born at night, but it wasn't last.
Hello, this is.
Not before last. Not before last.
Okay, hello, this is strike one, strike number two, uh, Chief Fofo called to inform me that, uh, we, he was instructed that we need to, uh, do a, uh, a resolution, a court never is chief.
Oh.
So I recall doing a resolution for.
Well, that's okay, we can do that, the resolution one will do that, and I would do that on my own.
The resolution.
Since we do not have computers.
What we need to do is I want to be safe, let's go ahead and do a resolution to appoint Ms. Wade, everybody that we appoint, including.
That's our.
Well, we'll appoint our contractor, boy, you too.
We can appoint everybody that.
And your second cousin.
Everybody gets one.
Shall we appoint ourselves too?
No, it's fine.
That's why I need to do a resolution, I mean, I mean.
So, Mr. President, uh, so where did the instruction come from to the chief?
He informed me.
I mean, uh, uh.
I'm curious, because did, did, did the instructions come to the fire chief, did the instructions come to the taxes, uh, collector? Did the instruction come, see, I'm sick of targeting, I'm sick of the targeting around here at City Hall, did the instruction come when we, when we hired the fire chief? Did the instruction come when we appointed the tax lady downstairs? Did she get instruction for a resolution, this is targeting.
Counsel.
Well, we'll.
Well, yes, please print it out.
It could be everybody, I mean, all names, you know, the fire chief, that way, uh.
I'm just gonna follow more that we appoint the fire chief. That would, would all of it.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, uh, back to this, and the personnel issue, I think that that is a great solution to, is when you look at that, because we're not supposed to, we, we're currently, we are allowing this much time to roll over, we have the budget in this, in our budget, which we currently don't do, uh, forecast, in our budget to say, we have, thirty-four thousand dollars in this department that could potentially, um, individuals could potentially have vacation time this year if they choose to do what, uh, what the works did several, um, months ago, and what, what I've learned, and I, I had a chance to speak with someone in here, and saying is that, time is one of the biggest steps that municipalities see, um, either through error or outright blading of adding time, or, um, saying they weren't paid, um, and so I don't wanna accuse anyone of that, but I, I, what I do wanna say is that we need some type of timekeeping measure, you know, when I, the poems that were brought to us by Councilwoman Thomas, um, during the, the sick-out or during the vacation time, I, there were two errors that I noticed and, and showed to you all immediately, but it had been signed off by the mayor and the department, he had no one even helped him. They said there were, there were, um, two sick days and three vacation days, but they paid them for the full, and didn't, didn't take the vacation days from them. And so, but they said that they were gonna be paid the full hours, not vacation, like they had separated none of others, so we need to make sure that we have some type of mechanism in place that we can reduce our liability in that area, um, and allow people to, to clock in, um, I spoke with some, some individuals that were here on the council and on the, um, in the, the city prior to my coming, and what they've stated is that we used to have a timekeeping system before this administration, and maybe we need to go back to that, that timekeeping system to ensure that we know exactly when someone did take vacation time, exactly how much vacation time is approved, because it'll be in the system, and, um, we have, we have a cutoff point that we'll know, we need to put something in place that we only roll over eighty hours there. There's no way we should be paying for three and four hundred hours of, because that's, that's, that's gonna be budgeted, that's not budgeted.
That's why I say far as with that, uh, personnel manual, because far as with vacation time, you can only accumulate so, so many during the year.
Yeah.
And all, like with, like with, uh, the state, with the city, you know, that carries on for retirement, but when you look in that vacation time, we can only carry, I think, up to, I can't remember, four, four eighty, four hundred, four hundred, yeah.
Well, we, we definitely have.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why, when I talk with the individual about, you know, looking at this personnel manual, to make sure that we're comprised statewide as well as federally.
Maybe we need to look at what other municipalities are doing, because if the state does have more money than the city themselves, so four hundred, or two hundred employees, you know, or a whole department that may decide that we're gonna, you know, do vacation out of, if that's gonna be approved to, to leave, um, that, that's gonna be a lot.
Like I said, particularly individual, you know, that worked around with this parent is awesome.
And maybe four hundred.
They do, all day.
I mean, look at it.
When we brought this up the last time, Councilman Randolph, um, said that a, a council long before us voted on this already, and we asked the clerk to bring us those minutes, uh, I'm wondering if she's gonna be bringing, um, Councilman Randolph inserted, when we talked about this the last time, he inserted that a council long before us already voted on that cap, that cap exists already by both of the council. At that point, we asked the clerk to, uh, research the minutes, so I'm wondering if she'll have them available, since we had an extremely long break, uh, if she'll have them available on tomorrow.
So the cap may already be in place.
He said they voted on it because of a situation, uh, he explained the situation, uh, I don't know if he was raising or not, I mean, on the old council.
Uh, if it's not in a policy, then that vote will be muted.
Yep, because it has to be part of personnel, and, and, and always, even though you, you talked about, like, always, that can be, we can look at it, you have to amend the personnel manual, and it'll have to come before the council to move forward with the vote, but if you did not amend that personnel, uh, manual, it's gonna be known and voted.
So, can we check it?
We can check it, yeah.
Yeah, right, because the fact of the matter, this is a new personnel, um, uh, document, and so if they amended it in previous, it was twenty fifteen, if it was a previous council, and before, and they amended the personnel document, but it wasn't put it in the update, but we still at a loss.
We need to, uh, amend and update.
Right, they need to amend and update.
But see, also too, when you amend the update, you have to bring it before the council, you just can't offer a chair and say, we're gonna do it this way.
Yeah.
So that'd be part of documentation also, cause there are recommendations that's brought forth in that personnel manual, that's to come before.
I, 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 I want you all to consider something also, um, maybe we need to look at, uh, outsourcing payroll. And the reason why I say, uh, that, you know, we, we're paying a whole lot of people that are not supposed to be paid, if we contract them with the company, they're gonna listen to the council because they're not gonna wanna pay it back. And the treasurer, uh, who's over the finances, after the council gives authority, we can go in and have the ability to go in, put the information in the system, uh, and finalize it for us. Um, we need to give her that, uh, authority and those rights to ensure that it's done properly, because, you know, we just talked about one year that we paid over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, in payments that we should have paid, um, we, we haven't talked about the two or three years that we paid those payments, and we hadn't discussed the funding that's still being paid that's not, uh, in line with what we've said, just a thought, um, I've, um, looked at some pros and cons to doing it, um, that way, and I've, I've spoken with our treasurer, and she's finally doing it.
I guess, yeah, when we talk about outsourcing, period, uh, and I think this garbage outsourcing is, is the worst thing we ever done for the city. And outsourcing the things that we don't have, you know, when we have control over things, we can always make changes, we can always do this and we can do that. When you're outsourcing, you're a diversity of the contract that is written, so I'm not for outsourcing.
There's, there's a difference, a vast difference between outsourcing garbage, which we, I, we should have never done.
The term outsourcing itself is what I'm talking about, I know the difference between payroll and garbage, Councilman, I really do.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you, uh, there's a vast difference between outsourcing garbage and outsourcing payroll, which many companies do, uh, currently, many, uh, not only companies, but municipalities, uh, have looked into that, and that has become something viable in the industry, um, that, that can be done. It, it's something that the council need to look at, I think the, um, treasurer told me they actually looked at it once and, um, decided not to because of the cost, when they looked at the cost factor. Um, and so that may be, that may not be something, but one thing that we'll do is ensure that we're in federal compliance, um, because right now, we, we don't, we're not sure if we're in compliance with all the federal, um, laws that we have to, to provide, um, especially with the updates in, that began January first of twenty twenty, and things that we as a council don't even know about, um, because that no one has come to me about the new W four and things of that sort, that will need to be handled through our, hold on, through our, through the, through our department or with us, that may be handled through HR and through the, um, through the treasurer's office, they need to have a relationship where they can communicate. So if they're not communicating, if the HR department is not communication, communicating with the finance department and their own payroll, what, what is going on for real? So we don't know, and so I'm just looking at a solution, I'll, I'll look into, um, whether the cost, I talked to the treasurer some more about it, it may be something that we totally don't need to do at all, but it's worth looking and seeing.
Okay, before I go to, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, the earlier one, best, and also Councilwoman Benton, Ms. Wade, has anyone got a few about the, is a new policy for the firefighters?
Yeah, no, I'm not aware, um, when it comes to administration, I'll be quite frank, it's never communicated to me, it's communicated to my staff, and I found out afterwards, after it's already been implemented, so those are things that I wouldn't be privy to.
You gotta change it.
Okay.
Mr. President. Things are communicated to your staff?
Right.
And you find out from who?
My staff, after it's already been implemented.
So you, you get these instructions or clues from your staff?
Basically, well, they are telling me what the mayor has instructed them to do, uh, just give you an example, uh.
No, I don't need an example, just send me a copy of your own court order.
Okay.
I wanna reread it, I haven't read it in a long time, but send me that so I can read it before tomorrow, I would really like to look at it again. I was under the impression you're supposed to be able to do, uh, your job in the capacity as treasurer, and, and I didn't know that, uh, you had a, a, a middle person or middle people speaking with you about anything, how do you know that that is correct? If it's coming from somewhere?
Yeah, they, they'll print out an email that he's told them to, I mean, I, this.
So after, you're saying after an action.
After, after an action has been taken.
You are notified that the action.
Right. So, so the issues that I'm having in terms of, um, disciplinary or, um, dealing with my staff is a result of the mayor giving them authority to usurp whatever my directive or whatever it is, or he's changing, making implementations like from payroll, that the people were getting weakly for years, and then we were doing it through attrition, like, or as people retire and come, and he changes, I'm not notified, they're just. And I think that's what you were trying to communicate, is not, is, is more of an HR issue.
Right.
That is being bypassed, and whether or not, when you're hiring people, we don't know whether or not they went through the process, whatever the files have required for the, for the, the federal, the things like that, that have usually.
Backgrounds.
The issue, yeah, cause like people, like Julie, who was like a layup, that has the knowledge and the expertise in the matter, it's not that you have people that's just trying to figure it out or just freestyling, and so it's gonna come back and affect the city, maybe not now, but later.
Which is why we have, uh, that, that position be filled by a qualified person.
Right.
But are you able to, uh, function in your capacity fully as treasurer?
It's limited.
Okay. Yeah, just since again, so I can read over again, since we have our attorney coming tomorrow, I just wanna be, I wanna ask him all the questions I can, since we're, we're, uh, agreeing that he can be here tomorrow.
Okay.
But, Ms. Wade, no one has mentioned to you about that?
I'm not aware.
Cause I know that's in that data.
Yes, it's January the first.
As of January the first.
See why?
If you, if you recall, Councilwoman Thomas, that I went and made, and they made the announcement that it was coming, um, the law had been passed that all firefighters have the firefighter cancer insurance, and it's to be paid by the city, um, by the city itself, I spoke with the, the, um, fire chief, he said that they currently have thirty-six, um, what would be considered firefighters, cause he said, we, but they achieve all that, and I said, everyone that would potentially, everyone but the administrator, it would be covered, it's approximately two hundred dollars a month, it would cost us, um, seven thousand seventy-two hundred dollars, but we're required by state laws for that to have occurred on January first.
They say it will affect.
The mayor mentioned it to him once, he said he did not put it in his budget because he wasn't.
But, but, but we're still alive for it, even if that's the case, um, Pauline, who handles insurance, should, should have made application or should have been notified to make application for it, so.
I don't know if it happened, I, I just, I just happened to hear about it when I was at the train.
But isn't that something that the council need to bring, that should have came before the council board up?
Right.
Yeah, should it?
From the insurance analyst.
Has Pauline communicated with you?
None of those changes, no, we had no, I'm not sure, and then, uh, if it's like through the insurance, she would handle all of that.
But then she may have been, had a gag or.
Are you saying it can be taken care of?
It, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, are you saying that it could be taken care of by Pauline and you not be aware, is that what you're saying?
That's possible, but I doubt it, cause we haven't got the new insurance unless they add to the cost, she has been, every year she notified me of what those changes are, and it has.
You have not been notified, right. And they, they said that we need to make sure with our payroll department.
That's right.
That you look into it, because half of it cannot be taxed, or part of it cannot be taxed, but another part can be taxed, because there's a, um, fifty thousand dollar, um, death benefit. But then there's also the medical part that pays about thirty-five hundred dollars a month in the case that they're sick, and that cannot be taxed, so, I mean, it needs to, uh, HR benefits all that need to payroll, all that need to be involved in that.
And also with that, I think it's a heavenly fine by it not being im- implemented.
Yeah, I suggest, Ms. Wade, that if you, you talked to Pauline to get her some information.
She got it.
About these changes, and then, that way you will be due left on, and then whatever need, what is, whatever necessary from a treasurer perspective, then at least you have a glimpse as to what the expectation is.
Cause see, the date is the thirteenth, and I don't know, it's supposed to be implemented on the first.
January first, if they see.
Okay, okay, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, go ahead, work to your audience, so we can move on, yeah.
Okay.
Trans, which box, gas, tax, downtown, period.
Yes.
Alabama.
Okay, uh, with the, uh, we start there, the boxes.
Yes, ma'am.
We have had these boxes now, how many, almost, how many months, Ms. Wade? About six, nine months? April last year, uh, and we know, everybody know that our city, a lot of the, our citizens and cell are, are waiting on us to do something about it, and this is our duty. Public safety is the number one issue in this town, and it bothered me that, uh, we sit back, we ask Steven, the, the department head, we've been waiting on them, and, uh, we had located the man out of Birmingham, and, uh, he was trying to get a map, they're requesting a map to the whole city where these lights at, or out, and, uh, each, each one of our districts, and, uh, we've been trying to, uh, get, to get the work through, through Steven Hendricks, and you know, it's sad that, uh, that our mayor is not letting the department head move forward on this, and this is twenty twenty, and the citizens and cell are looking at this to be taken care of. And, uh, my only thing that I can recommend for us to do, uh, Mr. President, is for the, the gentleman to come down. And I have a map, uh, I went all over the area where these lights are, and multiple on my, my map in each ward, and, uh, that's the only thing that I can give him to go in, uh, in the areas, cause most of these boxes are in the residential neighborhoods, and the boxes, they're, they're same box about nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty boxes, and we only have ten, so I recommend that, uh, we see what he say, can he come down and go buy that map, uh, cause it has the street, it has the street marked off, where, where that box is in that area on the pole.
South Canyon.
Can't do nothing with that, and, cause we can't start off twenty twenty, uh, where the citizens are looking, where they're gonna pay taxes and stuff, they're talking about, we need to, uh, the council need to move forward, getting these, uh, lights fixed, cause it's, it's public safety, so we must take care of.
Okay.
Uh, the next thing is, we have another, uh, problem with, uh, uh, the, the citizens are talking about, uh, our infrastructure, and a lot of people, you know, they be talking, they don't come to the meetings, and a lot of them don't know where we get our money from, uh, the gas tax that we get, uh, it comes from, um, where they give us to use for infrastructure in our, in our city, and, uh, I know a lot of us, we get our, uh, we use our money in our wards with, uh, these potholes, but somehow potholes are, these ain't potholes, these are, I don't know what they are, they're like, uh.
Seaford.
They're like canyon.
Canyon, yeah.
They're not potholes, and it has come. And, but, it did, this has come to a major problem in the city itself, because everybody's cars is tearing up, and our city insurance is turning everybody down. And the citizens are looking at the council people, saying, you know, we get calls, I get calls, and I go out, and, you know, and I explain to them that we get our, our gas tax money that we use, we use it for infrastructure, what we can, but when you got huge holes that could have been fixed, a year nobody came out, we had a pothole, now we stuck with this problem, and like, um, I know we have, uh, gas tax money, but, but look at some of the, we got some major problems. Some major problems that needs to be take, taken care of, and we got to come up with, um, something, uh, and I wanted to ask you this question, would that have sent, uh, tax that y'all had did for public. Would that half cent, uh, tax that y'all had did for public, public safety? Which y'all had in place? Was it directly for, uh, uh, just the police department?
Okay.
No.
So are we still, are we, do we still, uh, is it still being put aside? Tax will be, you know, the half cent tax y'all had did?
Our half cent tax is still in place. It definitely-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can you, can we use some of that, uh, money?
We'll use it in the budget.
In the budget?
It, it balances our budget.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, can it be used for some of these here serious major problems, you know? Cause these, these are some bad, these are not potholes for infrastructure.
That's what we need, that's what we purchase a pothole truck for.
Yeah, but I'm talking about-
Potholes and that's what we need.
But it's not running, it's not running. The pothole is not running.
It's not in my areas.
Not running.
I see some new, um, asphalt in other areas.
But they no, none, no asphalt. I've been had on the list for, on, uh, twenty eighteen where over on Virch and, um, Kingsley, uh, I have to go all the way across when I get money. I'm, I'm on that side of town now, some of them.
How much do we get the gas? About half a million, six hundred thousand dollars?
It was like five something.
Five hundred million dollars?
Yeah, let me just check, but I think- Um, while she's checking it and, and took, um, Councilwoman, she, she's correct, um, I haven't seen the truck. I, 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 my, um, as, uh, Councilwoman insurance said, my holes have now turned to canyons.
Right, never wanted any of them.
No, that's what I was just about to say. The recent, um, downpour, the canyons are now getting larger. Um, I had, um, I mean, text you too, Councilwoman. I had, uh, a lady, she didn't know what, uh, what war was, but I did tell her go see the truck for insurance purposes. She had, she had a, 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 she was bomb, uh, but it wasn't a bomb. She said, it was almost like she was sick. And, uh, I'm gonna give you my phone, um, cause I meant to do it though. And, but these holes, like he said, are now canyons. I have, um, I have, um, invoice that I need to submit and I'm glad to bring them gas tax so that, um, all of us can, all of us can take advantage of it. But while you have her looking at, of that number, we need to use, if, if public works, if whatever public works is not using and should be using, then we should be using it to fix these canyons. These canyons are causing us, with the insurance and everything else, uh, when the people are reporting to the insurance, their cars are, are, are there falling apart and damaged. And I know council members, they don't even report there. They're just, they're just falling holes and don't report.
Right.
And so it's, it, a canyon is coming in every ward.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like I said to this council almost a year ago, that these potholes is not gonna get fixed unless we fix it.
That's right.
And then the insurance company-
They, they-
I'm gonna tell you right now, the insurance company might tell us, y'all gonna find somebody to carry it.
But you know what, that's pretty much what you told us at the end.
And, and because they're not gonna pay your clients.
They ain't paying no money.
And they gonna look at the citizen's liability, you know, some of their assets to them. So we're caught between a rock and a hard place.
And?
Uh, I'm gonna call, uh, Mr. Henderson tomorrow if he has his phone to see if a pothole truck is still operative. And if it is, we're not even gonna wait on these potholes.
That's right. Because I know my thing, when you deal with the power, it's gonna run a month, it has to be a forty-five degrees. Yes, you're right. It has to be forty-five degrees. Then it hard get asphalt. Cause it got to be-
Asphalt, if they're running asphalt.
If they're running asphalt, it has to be forty-five degrees if I'm not mistaken. And I did see the truck last week. I saw the truck run it last week. I saw it run, but now I'm thinking, I think they led to do anything. I think they, but recently got it out of the shop and picking. But I did saw some driving with asphalt. I was gonna chase it down, but the traffic got me, I couldn't catch them. But I did saw like the truck.
I think one of their issues were the asphalt wasn't available where they buy it.
Correct, that's right.
So they, they was finding difficulties in purchasing asphalt.
Let me say- Cause it has to be that temperature, like I said, forty-five degrees.
I ain't making no moves just for that.
You are right, Jay, my sentence, President, because right now by McDonald's and Dunkin's from Waterworks, it took this company, this, uh, Waterworks contract, it took them several weeks to come to, I mean, several days to come and live, cause they had to go to the water, right? Once they fi- once they fixed it. It fixed now, it fixed now, but it took, said, almost a week. It took a while because they waiting on asphalt. After they fixed it, built a hole in, it took a while to get through that. But again, I was just impressed to Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, we got to, as council people, cause they do look at us, come up with some kind of solution to get these, these streets fixed. I, I see, uh, someone, I think Montgomery now trying to come up with occupation tax. Um, uh, uh, our governor, she came up with a gas tax. I mean, everybody's rough. Right now, we gotta come up with something that's not gonna hurt our system. But what else it gonna take to straighten our city up? You know, because right now, this city's steadily falling and it came in. And I think we up here for a reason, to try to correct some of this problem.
I was in the meeting, Councilman, uh, about two years ago, when that floated the proposition, especially after I found out it was over five hours coming in, seven hours coming in. I floated the proposition of an occupation tax. And, and it was quickly shot down.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not, I'm not saying I'm gonna resurrect that, but it, it is just so hurtful to me to see other cities reaching out and taxing people for things they need in this city. Just that these opportunities are gone.
They do.
There's no way of fixing these streets, y'all, with the money that's coming in and it ain't gonna happen.
You don't know.
It ain't gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen.
And I think, uh, irregardless of what y'all think about the mayor, the fire safety, the asset, the tax, give them off to fix these streets, that's the way it going. And I think we need to just be strong enough to make it happen. These, uh, you wanna see some, you wanna see some canyon? Go out here and run this through, Michael, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
I mean, it, it is, I mean, I passed by the other day, I'm not ever coming down this street. If, if you help me maneuver through this canyon, I'm not coming down this street.
That's why I be so hard on getting some taxes, uh, waterhead is, is terrible out there. I can't speak for you all. Yeah, I, I, right, but we need, so we need to make some tough decisions, y'all. Councilman?
Well, I wasn't on that level. I was on the level where I was talking about what we have. Because there was some question asked, uh, that funders that we have and they was talking about that half cent tax, uh, a lot of my constituents are very concerned about, um, before, they wanna know what are we doing with the money that we already been taking in?
Miss Wade, can you give her a type of, all the-
But-
The pothole truck?
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about. Let me talk and let me tell you what I'm saying. What I'm exactly saying. Uh, and I know you wanna say what you wanna say, but it's my time now. Let me, let me tell you what the citizen came to me. I get calls from various, some very con- concerned citizen that keeps up with, uh, keeps up with our own things that we be talking about. And they go do research. So they was asking me, since the, uh, we just took in, uh, uh, from our tax, took in, uh, uh, you know, with property tax, we have, we're paying, uh, all the taxes are being paid. They're asking us, uh, okay, since we got all the tax in, how much tax money we gonna take in? And does some of the tax go to infrastructure of some of these, these things that we need in our city? And I told them that I would bring it tonight.
But look at, but like, okay, look at-
I know about the pothole, I told them about the pothole.
A quarter mile, to get a quarter mile fixed, might be a half a million dollars. That's right.
Then they asked about grants. Other cities, I did a little research on that. Other cities, we have, we got, uh, Henry up there, uh, in planning development. Uh, I've been here three years, going four years. I put, uh, up there, you put in your streets that, where you can get some money, grant money out there for the, do the whole surfing of the street instead of pot patching. And I was doing some research on, uh, they were saying that that can help us too. We have a, a person up there that can do some research, try to get some grant funding for to do research. And he said, normally it takes like three, four years.
We, we have a grant, right?
But that's what I'm saying. We need to get this grant money out there. Other cities do the same thing. They apply for grants for the research, some of these, cause a pothole ain't gonna, we pot. But the more the rain come, you go back, the hole is bigger, it get bigger.
And also, keep in mind with grants, you have to be, uh, entire city, certain populations.
Yes.
You have to take all that into consideration. But what may be a good idea is we go ahead and move forward with a tiger grant. With a tiger grant, you know, it's gonna cost a lot of money to match it. But it should be between the city and county where we get more bang for our bu- bucks and pay some of these streets. You might put maybe a half million dollars in matching funds, but to look at that ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars. But far as with the, uh, the down, the matching fund is gonna be pretty high.
Well, I'm, that, I'm just giving you, this is what, this is what the, the citizen of twenty twenty, these are some main issues that, uh, a lot of my constituents that's up on Wood, on Summerfield, uh, I've been, they've been calling me, I've been meeting with them, they've been sitting down and they said, well, Councilwoman Thomas, we know, we, 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 we find our stuff. But sometimes the city got to go another direction and try to get some grants in here to fix some of these streets, which I put in up there to Henry. Uh, it'd be four years this year, that that whole area back up there, if there's any grant money out there or something, he needs to try to do some research on it and try to get the whole area res- research in the ba- especially the bad streets.
Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, if I follow up?
I, I, I wanna suggest, um, since we're paying somebody to do that now, uh, we get a list of, um, our requests, our interests, uh, in our city and get that to her, uh, so that, um, she's making the money that we're paying her. So, uh, Henry, you went to Henry, go to the grant writer.
No, I'm saying, I had, I had put our streets on there for four years. This year was four years.
Okay, so now we need to take it to our person that we hire. And I suggest we get a list and not just go with her with a tip it here and a tip it there.
Yeah, I had a whole area.
If we can all get together, not just, um, one ward, not just my ward, my neighbor's. Get, get together and get her a list of our interests and her, our needs.
Yes, yes.
Our needs assessing.
Not just write us a grant that we don't want.
Right.
It's a fact that she done her job.
What we need, yeah.
Give her a list of our needs.
Yeah, and so that she can, um, we can go ahead and drop that, drop that in her-
But that's what I was, that's what I was trying to, for your, um,
The, for the citizens who are asking about the half cent, yeah, sales tax. So that's reported on monthly by the, the treasurer and it's, it's on paper. Uh, you can give them that and, you know, so they won't have to-
Well, I think, you know, I think they asked-
Also, um, if they're doing, they're doing their research, I don't think the treasurer minds them calling her. Cause if you're, if you're doing research with the wrong people, if, if you're doing the research, if you, when you said that they're doing their research and they came to you and they asked you this and that, my first thing, my mind went straight to the treasurer. I wanted to ask the treasurer, did they ask you anything about the-
Sometimes people have interjectors.
Uh, did they ask you, cause she would've quickly have told them, this is what we're financing, this is what we're doing, and this is X, Y, Z. And then she could've also told them, if, now if you come on the beginning of the month, you will hear my, you will hear my report.
They know that.
On the, okay.
Oh, they know.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, for people that have called, for Councilwoman Benjamin, what we can do is, why don't we just set up a meeting with these constituents tomorrow who have these, uh, inquiry minds and brain nutrition. Two of them, so they can have a dialogue, uh, and I said, you know.
Or they can come here and-
I, I come here, I hear a report.
She makes it monthly.
Yeah, I would say, well, they was looking for, uh, better, uh, for, for this city to do better for twenty twenty with the infrastructure because so many people, cars are getting tore and the streets are raggy, the streets are flooded. And, you know, when you hear people talk about, uh, we elect officials, we're sitting up here, uh, they're saying that, well, here this twenty twenty, uh, what are y'all gonna do?
These are some of the same people who went off and tried to get the gas tax.
No, I'm not gonna say they are some of the same people.
No, I'm just saying.
The ones that I talked to.
Yeah. Councilwoman Jackson, would you do, Councilwoman Benjamin?
No, I just wanted to make sure that people who are talking have accurate information because, uh, well, you start looking at the whole, whole picture of things, speak with accuracy and then we can, we can approach it better than you going out, than people saying, I did my research, I did my research. Well, who did you talk to? So, because the information is made available here, it's readily available monthly when she talks about it and she brings it before the public, not just for the council, she brings it before the public.
While I'm speaking, I'm speaking in behalf of the citizen in my ward because, that when they call me and ask me questions, I try to do the best I can, you know, because of the condition that in some of the areas, they are not no little potholes, they are big holes. And like I told them, this is what I told them. I have used up all of my resource that I have had to get contractors to come in. When I came in, I didn't have any money and whatever I have, I have put it into Ward seven. And that's what I do. And I have asked-
For you to let them know that when they see you fixing the street, you're utilizing all this money to, um, do it and the other, again, additional, um, gas tax money. Y'all been doing that throughout the year, that's what you been doing it.
Yes.
So, doing it with, so, you know, you let them know that you're limited by the amount that you get in and y'all renew or get a physical amount to April.
April, yeah. Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Johnson.
I forget.
Okay, I agree. One of our problem, at least, I, I, on St. Anne, we need to make sure that ones, that when they came to put them sewer pipes down, uh, they need to be accountable when they coming to do the asphalt. You go down St. Anne Street from Jail Chestnut going to Seven Avenue, you Thomas a man cave hole down there. It's terrible. And like I said before, I had to get some rocks, ask Mr. Miller to put some rocks right there at the tracks. Now, you go down St. Anne, you got to do like this. I, I met with Ray Harv's at the Waterworks meeting and asked Ray, I said, man, look, y'all need to go back and look at St. Anne and try to get that redone. We got to stop these contractors for coming in there and patching.
I said, what I'm here to do also is just hold your check until-
They got, yeah. And now that street shouldn't have been going, but what Ray tell me, they gonna come, they gotta come back cause it's one of the streets that gotta come back to do sewer with that. But I'm saying to you, I think Councilwoman, uh, 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 Benjamin, I think they doing some of your ward. I think Councilwoman Thomas, I think they doing your ward. They need to make sure, when they put their asphalt down there, they need to be on top of it. Cause I'm telling you now, they, they patching, they're throwing their asphalt down, it's not lasting like shit. Now go down St. Anne Street, right there behind Phillipino, going from Jail Chestnut to, uh, Seven Avenue, you, you, you have to do this. And it's safe.
Well, twenty sixteen, he been working on a project over there right now, he go over there on Fair Park. Uh, he's been paying, cause I asked Miss Wade, I need to pull up and see how much money that that project that he did over there on Fair Park, right now, it gonna rain. We should see how that street done messed up so bad. He told me that he had, they had fixed it, he said they was gonna come pave it. They never did come pave it, now it is a mess.
How much, how much gas tax?
Oh, um, la- based on last year, we, we received two hundred thousand. I'll go back and look at the historical data to see how much we received in the past five years.
Did, did we say that we was gonna-
Divide it?
Divide it.
So can we divide it?
Well, y'all didn't vote on dividing.
Okay, we did.
But, cause you know, it was just going, uh, I think, was it last year? Now, I look back, I think it was like eighty-seven thousand or something that was remaining from who, while she took, got everything.
Yeah, cause some people already used some.
Yeah. I, I, I think we, I think we voted on that, I think we voted.
No, uh, uh, because the, the conversation was about divide, but then at first it was about on need basis, but y'all didn't agree on that either, nobody said anything.
Where could we put that?
We put it, Councilwoman Johnson tomorrow to divide the half cent. I'm finna say equal.
Me not using yet. If y'all saw that, that's, I bet that, yeah. I don't care, y'all need to buy these tree for the money. Y'all gonna come out the big one. It, it was nice, man, divide.
Well, there's nothing out here, there's nothing here. Okay, so if-
That was the optical person.
Yeah, Minister President, so if we do not divide it, I need to pass this around to y'all cause I, I need to use the money. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna show you, I can't, I can't clear this out, I'm sorry, I have to pass my phone around. I ca, I came here forgetting that the printer doesn't work. This is for Ward four and five, I need y'all to look at, I want to, uh, Sam and I. I'm gonna try to blow it up, y'all can stretch it. Sam and I got a quote, uh, over to our big break, um, for our area. And it's, um, it's more my area than his, but everywhere our area touched each other, where it didn't make sense for me to do my cave ins and not do his cave ins. Uh, we got quotes for fourth and five. So, you will see that at forty, at forty two thousand dollars for two wards, and we want to use some gas tax and our own, um, what is that, oiling? Our own oiling, and it depends on what the council does with the gas tax, whether we know how much money we need.
That's right.
We need to pay for our own oiling, and I need, because I need to bring it up for discussion tonight, so y'all can see it.
I do respect you, Councilwoman, I, I really what you say your needs are, but I got five, six people who do the same thing.
Uh, we gonna pay, y'all gonna divide, if y'all divide either, then we gonna pay for our oiling. But, but y'all said we gotta bring it before the council, so I need to bring it before council.
That's bringing it from the council.
And also, the person I'm talking about, the change I need to.
Yeah, I already talked to him.
And, and, and we just say, this is based on what y'all had available last year. You can come back, you can come back and reallocate, start back with the amount and then divide it equally like that, you can also do that.
You're looking at that, yeah, tomorrow, yeah.
Can you, can you?
Well, you know, it comes in every month.
Yeah, can you, can you email?
Okay, Mr. President, so can I put this on the agenda for, to pay out of my own, um, oiling and, and pin it, the council divide?
Email it, email it to me. We can put on, but we're gonna, we can vote on that, email.
Yeah, I can use it whenever council give it, and then my oiling.
Then we can vote on, um, divide the oil.
Okay, I'll send this off, I'll send this. Graham, uh, yeah, so I'll bring, uh, all that information on.
Email it to the.
Uh, since Councilwoman mentioned the, um, tree trailer, I have your, uh, port for money.
Oh, I got, oh, so thank you, yeah, I did, I also got an individual quote, thank, thank you to Mr. President. I got a guy that was real cheap, cause I didn't want to separate from that big quote, cause I don't wanna wait, um, yeah, I don't wanna wait on the big.
Well, you can get both of us.
Yeah. Uh-huh, yeah, so this guy, uh, will get me done this week, will he get me done this week?
Um, you, you, can you let me see your guy, because, uh, we've.
Y'all might have the same guy.
Frank, Frank Middleton?
Middleton?
Yeah. I'm Denmark, I don't know.
No.
So, oh, he's inexpensive.
Yeah, that's, that's.
He's a good guy.
That's who.
I think, I think, there's some city, I think it's great, it's probably, it's, it's a good, it's a good.
Okay, um, so he's gone through and doing assessments, five eighty thousand, um, dollars.
Yeah, I had to separate.
Um, trying to, cause he gave me your assessment, but I'll get another quote from him, because, um, we have so many dead trees. I was so scared, Jesus, that the wind went a different way. Um, because we have dead trees on City Ridways that's leaning over, and if it comes over, it's gonna hit somebody's house, their car. They, we, we need to get them down, I mean, we need to get them down before the, um, tornado season come in.
Right, we did.
I know we can get this information.
Am I answering, can we do this?
Yeah. Y'all voted on, I, I changed.
Councilwoman Thomas, anything else, you have the downtown.
Well, you know what I got on there, y'all.
Can I tell you about, can I tell you about downtown?
You can't finish, man.
Uh, I did get a bid from John Austin Scherlin, and it was like five thousand, they do all, the whole downtown.
They gonna do the whole?
Everything.
Wash the street out of there.
Everything, everything, five thousand.
For how long?
You got a contract?
I got a contract, I got it in the car, but now they said they're gonna do it just one time. They're borrowing everything, they'll do the whole downtown, and I think we need to get it done just for Jubilee.
I, I, also two counties.
Can you bring the contract?
I got, I was intending to bring it, this, this is my, um, it's in my.
Okay, that's the.
Also, two we need to do, um.
The garbage.
Yeah, the garbage, you already.
Yeah.
We had that worked on. Also, I think we need to pressure wash them streets, some of them streets downtown, coming up at Jubilee.
You better not pressure wash it yet.
No, 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 no.
We gonna have more seethole.
What, what I have?
No, I'm talking about the sidewalks.
I see how.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the sidewalks, sidewalks, no, no, sidewalks and also the body of my area. And also, uh, we need to get a guy, I've been looking at some stuff, some restroom, portable restrooms downtown, uh, I come with that quote. And not only we need to get with Henry Thompson also to start putting the area within park these buses. It ought to just be a bus parking area downtown.
Then you got the roof for all those buses.
Do we, um, do we also property make sure our, uh, welcome sign? Or we need to charge a fee?
Yeah, there you go, that's all I'm talking about, just zoning, just for buses, yeah, and charging, that could be a revenue stream right there. And also add a bathroom, portable bathrooms downtown, and when they add a buses, that could be a new revenue stream, you know.
What about that?
Huh?
We had it happen.
Oh, it's private. Okay, anything else, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm happy, we can finish you, so. The next one is, uh, um, you say you're gonna, you're gonna make sure that the garbage, we gonna, you're gonna do a thing for the garbage for Mr.?
Yeah, huh, yeah, yeah.
No, I, you keep saying, yeah, 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 but then you forget.
I didn't want to say it, I didn't want to say it, come on.
Oh, oh, you wanna, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, my next one is about, I, I can't say anything here because the chief ain't here. I wanted to ask him the question, because they passed the Alabama, uh, no litter law. Have y'all read that about it, it affects every city? So, that gives the police officer a right, if they see somebody littering, they can write them a ticket.
That's what, that's why I'm like, they police officer?
No, I'm talking about our police city, city officers. It's, it, they say, the Alabama litter law says that, the, uh, police department, if we see anybody, you know, like we see people driving up, people throw, throw the trash out the car. If the officer see you throwing trash at the car, you know, driving out, like all the areas, they throwing trash at the car, they can give them a ticket. That's what the Alabama litter law say.
This is good, Lord, and I, and I, and I hope and pray that our officers, uh, once they see it, they enforce it.
That's what I'm talking about.
But when I'm finding out, Mr. President, and, and hopefully you will be able to express this to the new chief.
Yeah.
That we got laws on the books that our officers are not enforcing, I, I, if.
It started, um.
If y'all recall, I, I promoted a, and I sponsored a, a bill, that if you involve in a vehicle accident, if you don't have insurance, then your vehicle will be impounded. Our officers are not in for accidents, Mr. President.
Do they go to accidents now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, lady ran into me, I went over to church and thank.
I ran into you.
Thank you, Mr. President, after your assistance, but, all right, that's, but the lady, but the lady admitted, she didn't have insurance. But she was allowed to leave. And, cause I wasn't forced, obviously, to do this job, but it just kind of flew in my face knowing that we got a policy on board.
That's right.
And this, and this was, this was done for money, I'm, I'm gonna have the same law, and I guarantee they enforce it. If you have an accident and you don't have insurance, your vehicle is impounded to insurance.
Just, just reiterate.
I had an opportunity to talk to a tow truck service today, and you got someone that's really kind of disappointed, cause a lot of things not going through. Uh, one of them is, he said Chief Green would not allow them to charge storage fee when it come down to a city vehicle. Uh, and they kind of, frustrated, but they didn't charge storage, uh, cause that's how they make their money, just through storage. But if, if the city done, just didn't have one for them, uh, he said, but the city is getting the five hundred dollars. Now, where the five hundred dollars coming from, I'm not sure, they, they not, they don't have license, uh, it's because they, um, um, get the car taken from them, you know. So, but I asked him, the next time they have a tow truck meeting, please involve me, I would love for them to come before the public safety and, and, and voice their opinion up here. Now, this, this took place today, I'm glad you brought that up. So, when they have a meeting, uh, between the five tow truck service, and what these guys saying is, it's certain, uh, warrants is getting all the calls now.
It's what they're all taking.
Correct, but they say it's not, they said, well, it is, it's certain warrants is getting all the calls, and it's not getting, it's not being shared among each one, cause it's, if this one, number one, get it, he shouldn't get it no more till the fifth one got here, number five, and number five tow, tow, right. But this guy saying, man, look, if you just listen to the scanner, you'll see, there's only certain warrants getting their call. Now, what they saying is, if somebody hit me and I said, well, I was told to pick me up, you know, uh, what, what, what can you do about it? When you got your preferred tow service. And they said it really bothered them because it's just the same warrants are constantly getting the calls, same warrants, and it's not happening again. So, they, I said, well, man, look what you can do, come before us, uh, uh, call me to y'all next meeting, when all five of y'all, then I get some council people, we make it maybe ten y'all meeting, and see what's going on, see if we can help, but I, I did mention to put it, maybe put it in a public safety meeting and see what we can do. But you are right, now, I'm not sure what they doing, but that's something we do need to address and find out if they is making that, that charge. But also, we need to maybe empower our own cars, and that way we can charge a storage fee, and, and it mean putting that out there to the city yard, you know.
Well, I think, I think, I think we talked about that, but the liability is just too great.
Right.
For the city. They put a car out there and somebody said, you know, I had this in my car, y'all, somebody done done that, so, that has my business, but I don't think they would have a cho, uh, uh, a choice to say, I don't know my vehicle tolling by, by who up. If they, an accident.
Right, that's right.
And I think if the police department got it, and they should, regardless of who's on duty, they would know who's next in line. True, now, if they don't have that, then whoever's calling in will call whatever person that they want to.
Right, right, but it needs to have a location.
All right, anything else, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, in the near future, when, uh, this bill here deal with the old depot. The bill we got right here, you got it here for the two thousand dollars.
Uh-huh.
Um, the old depot is a part of, uh, I know you've been going there, you and Carl, y'all on board, on that board of the old depot. Uh, that is, that, that, that's a city building, isn't it? Okay, so, um, the young lady, um, uh, had a major problem dealing with some kind of gas in there, in that old depot. And, uh, she had to, uh, call out, well, she called out to Terry, Terry Davis, uh, to, to report this here. And, uh, they wouldn't do anything about it, so they had to end up with paying the money out of their pocket. And we need to, uh, that's why I said, we need to, some of our department heads, uh, got too much, uh, too much power in, in making decisions, and I thought we were the body of the council. Uh, we need to, uh, if we got a committee, uh, dealing with the buildings, uh, chairperson over the building, call the committee together. Should have called us together, cause this was a major problem, that these people needed to, uh, it's gas, they had to turn, the, the, the gas company quit, they didn't turn the gas off. So, this, I hope that twenty twenty, that we'll be able to try to let the department heads know that, uh, they don't just do that like that.
More, more responsible, go ahead and put that on the.
Yeah, we need to, cause they paid money out of their pocket for, to fix the problem, the department head, uh, didn't, uh, wouldn't allow them. They could have called the committee, we could have got together and made emergency, go ahead on the payment, they turned the gas off. They had to fix it, these people had to come in and fix it.
Okay, to approve two thousand dollars for the blue tape, uh, and create a verse. We'll put that on the center panel, uh, what else, anything?
Hey, uh, are we gonna have our resolution, did everybody get that on their phone about the resolution, like the keys?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Johnny, did you get yours? Mike, you got yours? Uh, he emailed it to everybody, Graham emailed it during December the twenty.
Twenty something.
Twenty something.
So, what happened?
The resolution on the keys, everything's not in there, we gonna have to add, cause I had Ivy to pull up the minutes. They only do what downstairs told them, but when we did the minutes, we requested for the clerk to have the keys to all of the city buildings, and also let the clerk have the code to this building, because when we come, when, when the councils are in or whenever we have something, uh, she need to know how to access the codes to get in and close enough the building. Uh, the other people have them that are not, um, which the clerk's supposed to have. It said that, the state, the state law, this lady said, that the clerk is supposed to have all the keys in the office and all the, as, well, we wouldn't have had all these different codes, but, um, it needs to be put in there, he didn't put that in, if you read it, y'all read it. He left that out, he only did what, I ring what the mayor told him, four bills, but that's not with the minutes. So, I had Ms., Ms. Ivy to pull up all the minutes of the requesting that we asked for, so we'll have it tomorrow night, and then, uh, we can, like Ms., uh, Councilman Benjamin said, we can add it in the resolution.
Explain that.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to tell you about that too, we got a problem, y'all. We have a problem with the raining in the building, and we have a problem with, uh, our city property is, is terrible. All the wires are down in, in the IT room, we got all kind of wires, and with all that equipment that we got in there, uh, have any of y'all went over there and seen the high look? We got all the electric wires, you know, with that big, all our equipment in there, and then we had a, we got to get a window pane put in, it been out, uh, two years, and the moist would mess up that whole system, so we got, we got some work in here need to be done.
That's the resolution, R one thirty eight dash eighteen slash nineteen.
Mm-hmm. But he didn't put everything in there.
The windows are still out, and that has to change.
You ain't got no, what, you ain't got no?
Come on, now, come on, let's, let's go ahead and, go ahead. Anything else, Council?
Uh, just, um, just these thing, main issues that we need to get our city hall back in, these, our buildings, we gotta get our buildings up, we gotta get some work done. And this is danger right here, because, uh, the, if it more rain harder, the more rain, it'll start firing this building, y'all know that though. That's electric up there, the rain is coming down over the electric wires. Well, this ain't the first time, you can see, it been doing it for a minute every time it rains. Uh, and, uh.
That's a new one.
Yeah, that's a new one, and that one right there will be in doing it, so.
Some decision we gotta pick, man.
Yeah, we gotta find some way to get this stuff done. But that's all, uh, I just wanted to know, and, uh, we gotta pay for some signs. No, we not gonna have to pay for, we need to make this clear with the ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, they knew we were cleaning up this, this city. Someone, like I said, everybody make a decision, our HR person, not HR, but I can't remember who she is, but.
Pitch it.
The what? Well, she made a decision to, uh, the, is it, is that Deltas? You know, Deltas have this thing going on this month, they advertise, you know, shop sale. What happened was, uh, during the time we was getting ready to clean up the city, they went down there and put out like nine, I think nine signs. And, uh, the gentleman was coming in, he came to sit up, pull up everything, he took the signs up, and Ms. Veronica Brown told me that, uh, she called city hall and she talked to, Suprema Simmons told her that she can go down there and place the signs on City Ridway. And, uh, you know, when we get ready to place stuff, they have to come, we have an ordinance, they have to come before the council, so that's what happened. They took the signs up, and they're asking for the signs to be replaced.
How many signs?
It is nine.
So, they, they were destroyed?
Well, at first, when, uh, when I called Mr. Barnes, he had, at his business, they had taken them out there. But when Mr. Barnes said, pick them up, he would bring them to me Friday, uh, when he went back out there, they were going to trash, the truck had came through, so. So, we, uh, we owe them for their bringing the signs, they was supposed to have been up the whole month of, 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 uh, January. They put them up before January, because, uh, they have this, uh, the Deltas have something going on, they put out shop sale, uh.
Well, I guess what we can do is type a vote to, man, to, uh.
They got some string coat.
Are you planning, are you planning to sign?
But, uh, if I'm not, uh, Mr. President, my question now was, that we got laws saying signs can be on city property. So, that mean that, uh, she gave them permission to put them on city property? See, I, that.
That's a lot of deals.
She's agreeing to, she told me. She said.
To be honest with you, we could have just told them to just go AT double cockers key, but due to the fact that they was authorized to put them there, we gonna have to go ahead and pay for it.
Cause it was good for Peter, it was good for Paul, it's just like Ms. Sam, it's just up in talk to them, right? And then, uh, she, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, about her, uh, got signs on city property, you know, so what we saying is, it was good for Peter.
I told this, I told this, she was saying on city property.
This would be a problem.
Authorized.
Right, I know, I'm saying that she can't do that when it's on the book, a law.
That's a law, the ordinance said, not on state property. That's a law, the ordinance said, not on state property. Obviously, since she gave the order. The mayor need to pay for it, because. Yeah, because, uh, Miss, Miss Veronica, Veronica Brown told me, she said she called her, and she said they knew about the ordinance. She said they knew, I'm gonna tell you, Miss Pitt, Veronica said.
That's the self there.
Listen, she said they knew about the ordinance, not the place, but they called the S. And she said they called an S down there, said could they place them for the end of this month? And, and Suprema told them, yes, she said, she said exactly who she talked to.
That's pre-ta- premeditated.
And I said, well, Miss, Miss, I told Ms. Brown, did that, I said, Ms. Brown, you know we got an ordinance, and if you was gonna place a sign, you had to come before the council.
That's premeditated.
So we all nine, we all nine signs, y'all, they want them.
Councilor Shaw, they would go to Councilwoman.
I don't think the council could have authorized.
No, we can't.
You know, because what would we be doing, we be putting ourselves in.
Yeah, right.
You know.
Well.
Are you asking for my, for my being the last?
Councilwoman Benjamin Daniel.
All right.
Okay, um, contracts for services, a lot of us have touched on those today in our, uh, our print minds. I'll get it printed some kind of way, uh, I'm out of ink at home.
You can email it to me.
Okay, okay, will you do that for me? Okay.
Why don't you, I better, I better inform about this, uh. He was administrator assistant. But we have a liaison for us, take it to her.
Well, okay, so thank you, that brings me to my next item.
Haven't you been talking?
No, I've been talking.
I was gonna tell you. You all haven't met Miss Harris?
I know her from St. University.
But she, she's working in Ivy's office.
But was that secret? We still got naked.
And, and she's working in Miss Ivy's office, and I was talking about Miss Ivy, that she is her, a new administrative assistant.
And Miss Ivy?
And she is a, she's pulling double duty, she is the liaison person for the council, as well as, in, uh, in Ivy's office. So, you last.
So, yeah, that brings me to my next item, my next item is council administrator assistant. So, uh, because I have a number there, I have this written down, because it's a list of things. So we contracted, uh, we contracted Miss Ellison to, uh, to service us, and so that we are reconnecting with the community, our constituents. Uh, we are able to send in, um, stuff that have not been sent in lately. Uh, on, um, in November, Miss President, you sent, you sent a memo requesting access. I got this in my notes, I had to have notes on this one, uh, requesting access to, uh, for our office, access, uh, the phone, phone. You would, uh, she can call out, but no one, no citizen can call in. Uh, and I don't know how it is now, it made me completely down, I'm not sure. And so, on, uh, I sent in a work order in December, on December eighteenth, I sent in a work order. And once the work order got down there, Miss Ellison was told, uh, to send it back. The, that council members, the council members have been personally, uh, speaking with department heads until, let them continue that.
Girl.
Let them con- and, and, no, I haven't, let them continue that, and the work order was sent back on December eighteenth, back from where they were coming, back to the council office. Uh, on December twentieth, in between that time, I said, well, send it back through email, send it back through email, so to get an email response to that, I wanted an email response. On December twentieth, uh, which is the next day after the nineteenth, the email was shut completely down. So the, the capability to send that was taken away, that was, it was cut completely down on the twentieth. Our ink went out, and I said, well, we don't have email, but we still can do general stuff, we still can do purchase orders, we still can do work order requests. Uh, whether they rejected or not, we still can do things that's not internet based. And we ran out of ink. Mister President went to a private company and got the ink on December twentieth. Shortly after that, the printer and the copy was completely shut down, so therefore, none of the other work could be done as well. And I was told, um, I was told that not even my work that I got, that got through before it was shut down was supposed to happen or be done. Uh, and that was, uh, before or on December thirty-first, when it was shut, after the ink was purchased and placed in. It was then shut completely down, with no access at all. So what I get asked then is, I asked Councilwoman Thomas, she was at, um, city hall one day, I said, would you please go for me, from the first floor to the second floor? And see if everybody is shut down, like, is, is it a total shutdown, because I don't want to be out of order, it could be a total shutdown. Um, and I wasn't there, I wasn't, and so, she said, she, she asked finance, she asked the clerk, and she asked those who would answer. Are you shut down, do you have access to the internet, is your copy working, is your printer working, everybody in the building was working except for Miss Ellison. So I asked Miss Ellison to go down to Mister, um, Zeb's office to see if she could copy and print some things that need to be copied and printed. And, uh, I was on the phone with her, because I wanted to hear what the response was, and he was very cordial, very nice, like, yeah, yeah, of course, you can use our printer, I copy it.
Who's Zeb?
Zel. I said Mister Zeb, because I couldn't remember his last name, what name? Mister Lee, okay, uh.
License expired.
License expired, okay.
I knew, I didn't know.
I couldn't remember his last name, so I said Mister Zeb, so Mister Lee, um, and so she was able to do that. And I don't know what the situation is, if she's gonna be able to go between offices and say, can I use your equipment, um, and can I do this and can I do that for the whole time? So, it, it appears to me that it is the office that has been targeted, or the person that has been targeted, because no one else in the building. Uh, has been shut down, and I wanted to verify that to make sure before I ran my mouth on the subject. It is just our office. So now, we're getting phone calls from citizens, I thought you said we can call, we can now call, we can now call the office, I thought you said we can now call in work orders, I thought you said we can talk to y'all secretary. And then they tried to call her back, now, so I had her make some phone calls, because they're an awardee, and they tried to call her back. Because some people look at the caller ID, and they call you back. And, uh, they could not get her, because there was, there was no access for them to get her, it was shut down that one way. And so I don't know now, Mister President, if it's shut down both ways, I know that your phone was shut down back there completely, because we tried to, we tried to see, if we can run back there and do yours. And see if it would happen that way, it didn't happen that way at all. So, I, um, it, it is a complete shutdown, uh, but we are paying for the services that we contracted. And, and I just really need to know what we need to, um, and now, Councilwoman Shaw has, has given me some new information. And not even send it, he said, I found out even that he said we're sending downstairs, that's what we wanted, uh, but maybe she not interested.
No, no, I was, I was gonna bring that up.
Um, yeah, thank you.
My contract, she wanted to bring for the council tomorrow to have send it for, uh, secretary for the special election, so she needs money in that office to help with the special election, so.
Really, like a third person?
Yeah, a contract will be forthcoming tomorrow, nine hundred dollars average, something like that, I think.
This is for an election season.
Secretary work for the clerk office.
Yeah, confuse me.
Yeah, secretary for the clerk office.
She's one of those.
But basically, it's just for that election process.
So, yeah, that's why we, uh, had that extensive conversation about bringing her back, because she knew what to do, and she was already prepared and ready. We had asked the clerk to bring that contract some time ago, so now he said, now, Friday, we learned that there's a person, now she brings the contract? You ever guess what?
Let me suggest, since our clerk is gonna be here tomorrow, let her.
Bring it forward.
Form us as about this new person.
Okay.
Because nobody has officially told us.
She can officially tell us tomorrow.
Now, she may, she may plan to do that, I don't know. She, she, she may have this hair that's here, I don't know. But I don't know, I'm just letting you all know what I discovered.
Okay.
Yeah, but she want that contract, she do want the contract to have sent out for the election. Because, I mean, it's hit it during the election season, Miss Harrison cannot handle that job alone, and then if you just met, you got somebody that they have new. And it's gonna be like, they got a headline.
Would you please send a second request, uh, of these things, and I can send it to you?
Send it to me.
I have my little notes in here, I couldn't print them off, of course, um.
I got a new phone.
I, I sent, thank goodness, I would send it to you, would you just please, uh, send a note to him, just officially, uh, requesting, uh, you know, these things.
Send it to me.
Access to these things and stuff, and, and that they please accept our order request and not send them back. Um, I don't know the council member that's doing, what was said, if they're doing. Uh, the next item, and I'm gonna go quickly now, um, my next item was, uh, is the city IT department. So the city IT department, um, there were, uh, so the city IT department is responsible for a lot that's going on in the council office, because it's their department, okay? It's their department, and so again, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, on the day that I said she was here, I had her to walk down to, I, well, I asked her, and she did. Walked down to the IT department to ask concerning shutdown, what is the problem, what is the issue, what is it that we need to do? Uh, is there a form that we need to do? And, uh, Councilwoman, the, the report that Councilwoman Thomas gave me, it just, it was very disappointing, it was, um. It was unprofessional, and I just hated to hear it, I just hated to hear what she said, that she was told that should happen to the council office. Um, so, Councilwoman, Councilwoman reported to me that the IT department had their instructions to shut us down. And they don't, they don't even know how my work got through, Angela Benjamin's work was, even her work was not supposed to get through, and we don't know how she got through. It was supposed to be shut down before that, and it was disheartening and disappointing to hear that, uh, but I know people get their instructions, and they have to go on. Okay, go as she says. Uh-huh, and so, those were the instructions to shut this office down, off the council office down, and, uh, deny access. So, we've been talking about IT in the box and stuff, and may, maybe we can have that conversation again about IT in the box, because we need, um, we need our internet access. Uh, let's say A M is emailing us, let's say, anybody important emailing, statement of economic interest is gonna be emailing us soon, it's from to our report.
Don't let it tell, we could've missed that.
It would, it might have missed.
And we, and we had.
December thirty-first, yes.
Depend on our staff to let us know about this.
We depend on that.
And the person can't tell, but they all.
And when they don't know, when they don't know, and so I, I sent her email address to all these people, when I sent it to y'all and the media, I said, you know, this is a new person, this is her email address. I also sent it to those people who send us appointments, stuff.
And then I keep this in mind, too, with a new person down there, even though she might be the liaison, she, she's not familiar with the open needles law? She's not familiar.
Yeah, they're gonna be emailing her.
Could you remind Miss Harrison tomorrow to keep us informed about this for.
I will.
This, this, uh.
Yeah, might be something new going on, we need to know about.
We don't get that in, then we move on tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, and it might be something we need to watch on video, we don't know. And so, even though they have her, our new email address, they could've been emailing us all holiday break. We don't know, we've been cut off from that, so if, I'm gonna give you this, if you're asking them to please, and we can start to talk about getting our own access, we got to have our own access. I also asked her to, to get a quote, and I know that she's been ill, uh, the couple of days, I asked her to get a quote to, so I can show it to the council on how much it may cost. To get a city phone that remains here for her, so that citizens can call, call city hall. Because our phone is shut down, we don't have access, even people trying to reach us, uh, uh, return, because I made that super announcement, that folks will now have access to the council. And it's not true, it's just not true. And then council can say whether they want to do that, or not do that, or, or lock the phone up at the end of the day, use it when you're here, or whatever, but we, we don't have access.
Can we give her, get her cell phone with a number, and just have.
Yeah, or just do that.
Yeah, just, just, uh, just, I just want them to throw away phones.
Yeah, it could be that.
At least, at least people have.
And then all of us can give it to our, our constituents, all of us have a number, official number to give to our constituents.
And also, too, I asked Miss Ellison if she can look at, I think, our department need to purchase a laptop, and also a projector.
She can make.
Because see, with that projector, I want to start back doing like I used to do, putting the projector on the wall, and then what, people can see what we're voting on, the consent agenda and everything.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We used to do it, but after IT was, was dropped, uh, ceased and desisted. It, it kind of like, so, you know, put some, but I did ask her to get a laptop, she could use a laptop, then like I say, for instance, when we have award meetings, we might, we might want to do, you know, the crime rate, the police department may want to use the laptop, something like that. But I did ask her to look at the laptop and also the projector.
So she'll bring us all that, okay, all the courses, uh, and then finally, for me, is, um, um, and the chief is gonna be here, uh, he, he probably gonna come back tomorrow, um, he probably gonna come back tomorrow. I had spoken to him and his, uh, his evening affair, he had a morning affair and an evening, evening affair, about police department vehicles, um. Well, first I said, Academy, what car are you gonna be driving, which car are you gonna be driving, he said he was gonna be driving the one that Chief, car you have. And he said, but it's, it's not equipped for him, it, it doesn't have, uh, radio access, it has a third row seat that he does not need. He says more, it was, it's more like you would use, uh, at your house, like a residential car, and he doesn't have those things, and I said, well, what can the council do to help? He said, this is what he said to me, he said, Councilwoman, I need to work on my officer patrol cars first, he wasn't even thinking about himself. And I was thinking to myself, the chief needs to be able to radio, at least radio somebody, you know, in his car. And, but he, the first thing he said to me was, I'm, I'm, I'm patrol, I gotta patrol, 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 I gotta get them what they need for their vehicles, and then if y'all wanna talk about my vehicle. Uh, then I said, yeah, but Chief, you need to be able to radio out to somebody or something, so he's, he said it's like a regular vehicle, uh, they don't, they don't require third row seating and all those things. They require official police stuff that's supposed to be in there, and it's not in his vehicle, and, uh, I had it on here tonight, so I could bring it up tonight, and he could expound on it, but I think one of the officers came and got him tonight, he had to go. Uh, and so, he'll be here probably tomorrow, did he text you to say he's coming tomorrow?
I have a text.
Okay, just ask him if he's coming tomorrow, he can explain it better than I can, I'm just hoping to explain it while he was present.
So, uh, that concludes, uh, agenda, but.
And you got one more.
I got, I got Councilwoman Shaw out here, and I asked y'all about the civil agenda, Councilwoman Shaw.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I was contacted by, uh, the wife of, uh, retired former, uh, first African-American chief of police, uh, Chief Ernest Tate. And, and I will be circulating to the council tomorrow, a copy of a petition where the citizens on Cold Street has, uh, signed their approval. Uh, that their name, Cold Street, be officially changed to Ernest Tate, and, and recognizing and acknowledging the services of, uh, former, uh, chief Tate to the city assembly. I also will be asking this council to waive the thousand dollar fee, uh, for the chief, because of his thirty-four years of service, he served the city assembly for thirty-four years. And I think it would be something to show our appreciation to him, since the, uh, his, his, uh, his, uh, neighbors feel, uh, that he's deserving of this recognition. So tomorrow, I will be asking the council to vote on having a public here, I think, have a public here, to, to have proposed in the comments, uh, the name changed. And from there, then the council will go up or down, whether they will support this initiative, and also if they were willing to waive the one thousand dollar fee. I would hope, pray that my council will be in agreement with it, but if they're not, then I'm gonna be looking at using some more of this money for that. I, I hope the council don't get into a fight, a, 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 a disagreement about this waiver fee, because we can't waive this fee, there's, there's nothing that's in concrete. And to my understanding, this fee was put in place to offset the cost of the size that would it take to depict what street you're now on. So, I'm asking my colleagues to be in support of this proposition, and I think former chief deserves of this recognition.
I, I do recommend, one more question. You know, also, the number two sign to be purchased.
Right.
Would, would, would they buy the two sign, or you want, uh, try to include that with it?
Well, the thou- the thousand dollars, which is one of the requirements for that, but I'm asking the council to waive that, and let the two signs be purchased with orders.
Okay, because, yeah, I don't care if Jackson something got done, and I think he got paid a thousand, plus he got to purchase every sign.
Yeah, see, we let him have two signs, yeah. Yeah, I see. We just put that two signs here.
I I have, I have. Yeah, he just got, he just got two uh.
Two signs.
Two signs. And uh and and with Chief Tate being the first, you know, when you're, when you're the first, you always hold out a history.
But uh if 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 we see that be a problem, uh, I know myself, so like, so I always, and keep them on through the waving.
Just throw it on paper.
Throw a red flag over everybody.
Just throw it on paper.
Just, 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 just.
I I get it.
Brother, brother.
And I get all right.
Brother, they waited. I wasn't even paid for that all this.
Yes.
So it won't be no problem with the.
We're just the all this price and we just give people the all this.
If you feel wrong, now Councilwoman, uh someone may not have it.
I ain't got no all this.
Those, we have, we have.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I think I would do, it's only two, five, two, so I would give Mr. Henderson to give us the cost. I may not have them all.
That's fine.
But I will not uh I will not ask for a waive fee.
Yes, yes.
I just keep that.
That's fine.
I promise the council.
Also, too, what we can do to Councilwoman Shaw, if I'm not out of line, we probably can have a public hearing prior to our next council meeting at four o'clock.
I would recommend, suggest, recommend that we do that, so that we will be able to vote up or down in our next council meeting. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. That that'll be fine. We can just go ahead and move forward. But far as tomorrow night for the consent agenda, Councilwoman, you you gonna be?
I'll text it to you. Want me to text you or email?
Text or email, either one. Uh also, this is going uh on the seventh agenda. What do you have on the seventh agenda? Uh.
No, I asked you about the uh the contract.
Contract. I know you're talking about.
That contract. Yeah, I I I did not.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Robert, I'm sorry, yeah, Robert.
Robert. Okay, I asked, I asked him to go ahead and email, Graham, go ahead and email. So we're gonna go to all the contracts, gonna put them on the seventh agenda. We're gonna also, Councilman Johnson, put that, let me get that one also.
Which one?
Uh, sure.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get that, try to put that on the seventh agenda.
He gave it to you yet? Or I'm gonna pick my stuff. I will pick my stuff.
No, I just tell him to email it to me. Also, uh I have the Harrison ask for the nine hundred dollars for sending a stat of mine. Uh he should have that contract tomorrow, so.
Mr. President, if we, now, I don't think we need, they're gonna approve it, but now, Councilwoman uh Thomas, now, before they end up doing the plants and stuff right now, I I'll try to get them to do it closer to Jubilee time.
Yeah.
Right, but we're going, we're going, but just tell me when they get started, tell me the certain timeframe, cause that way everything will be looking nice and beautiful. Because all that bad wasn't gonna come in now.
Yeah.
It's on me, right, so yeah. Okay, I hope you know same thing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Any contract that you have, go ahead and email it to us. I'll go ahead and put it on.
My, 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 my contracts are, so when they leave, they need to bring my file of of by all my contracts they done for me.
I'm gonna take a picture, send it to you.
Yeah, take a picture, give it to me. So basically, just look at the contracts and this bill here and.
And I gotta use my all these.
Yeah, yeah. Oh.
I know, right?
I knew it was something I thought about. We need to go ahead and vote. Also, the split of that uh gas tank.
And and not leave you out.
We're gonna tell my lady, you know.
Right now.
You have something to be, you have to tell my lady, you all. You need to get a disproportionate amount, but we were saying leave you out.
Yeah, we gonna be.
Yeah, we all saying.
We gonna be in your discount.
We're gonna tell my lady out.
We gonna leave you out, we gotta get out, boy.
We gotta get out and.
I feel, uh, can't.
Okay, I got, I got to go. All right. Oh, I have to tell Miss Wade, cause I definitely wanna go ahead and put all that on the seventh agenda. Tomorrow, four o'clock, executive session. Then we're gonna go, four o'clock, then we're gonna go executive at five o'clock, going to it. Hopefully we'll be here a long time.
And and she had given us, we had all those resolutions by those departments, so we can go on that too.
And and the weapons.
Uh-uh, surely owe that weapon center, uh, you need your money.
Oh, yeah. Add everybody.
Add everybody.